It is 6:30, May 2nd, 2017. Called to order this meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join, rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we do justice for all.
City Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
McKinney, absent. Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That is eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is Proclamations and Presentations, and today we have two proclamations. So, the first one is hoping that spring or summer arrives soon. It's about Kids in the Park Day. Whereas, May 20th, 2017, is the Seventh Kids to the Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust; and whereas, Kids to the Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks; and whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks; and whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesteremia. And whereas, Kids to the Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants; and whereas, Kids to the Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And now, therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the City of Laramie, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2017, as Laramie's Kids to the Park Day. We urge residents of Laramie on this day to make time to take their children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. And I believe we have some representatives of our Parks and Rec Department here. If they'd like to come forward. Director Fieser.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could say one thing about parks is one thing that we need to keep in mind is that they're the most socio-economic available recreation amenity that a city can have. The maintenance of parks, they're open to anyone, any age, any race, any color, any social status. They're available to go and use the parks, and you've got to keep that in mind. We did want to host an event that day, but we're already hosting another event, which is the Touch a Truck Event on May 20th at the Isen Event Center from 10:00 to 2:00, where little kids can come in, and big kids can come in and see trucks up close. So, that'll be part of our Kids to Parks Day celebration.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for everything that you do for our parks, and we're looking forward to them greening up very soon.
If the snow stops.
Thank you very much. So, our second proclamation is recognizing our municipal Clerks' Week and paying homage to the people that really make city government run. So, whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time and honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest office among public servants; and whereas, municipal clerks provide the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of other levels of government; and whereas, municipal clerks pledge to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all while serving as the informational center for local government; and whereas, municipal clerks strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize municipal clerks and their dedication to the communities that they serve. Now, therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim and announce that May 7th through 13th, 2017, is Municipal Clerks' Week, and ask everybody in the City of Laramie to thank our municipal clerk, who right now is Angie Johnson. And who did a wonderful job writing the proclamation. Did you have to write it to yourself? Well, please pass our thanks to our deputy city clerk as well, who deserves to be equally recognized. So, Your Honor, thank you very much.
Your Honor, we wouldn't function very well without our city clerk.
I don't think we would function at all.
At all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Onto our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. So, City Clerk, can you read the ordinance for item 4BI?
The City Council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on May 2nd, 2017, in the City Council Chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Text Amendment to Chapter 15, Point 14, Point 080, Point C, Point 4, Point C. Design Standards: Garages of the Unified Development Code to allow for garages for single-family attached duplex structures to have a larger percentage of garage door compared to the overall facade if the home is two stories in height and meets other minimum requirements.
Thank you very much. So, at this time, I'll open this public hearing open to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make any comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to our next item, which is another public hearing regarding ordinance 1963. City Clerk, can you please read the notice?
The City of Laramie will hold a public hearing on May 2nd, 2017, to gather citizen input on proposed amendments to Title 12, Chapter 12, Point 48 of the Laramie Municipal Code for the purposes of removing language declaring parks' use fees as non-refundable, setting the park use fees, and setting damage deposit fees, and incorporating said items into the Parks and Recreation Master Fee Schedule to set annually by resolution. Those wishing to comment on the proposed amendments are encouraged to attend the public hearing at 6:30 PM on May 2nd, 2017, in Council Chambers of City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue.
Thank you very much. So, I will open this public hearing open to public comment. Is there anybody that wants to make a comment? All right. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing and move on to our next item, which is announcements. City staff, do we have any announcements tonight?
I believe so.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is disclosures by City Council members. Do we have any disclosures from anybody on the agenda tonight? All right. Item number six, I will turn over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay. We have two changes this evening on our consent agenda. Item 8D is moving to our regular agenda, and it is becoming 13A. And our item number 15, or number 16, on our regular agenda, is going to be changed to adjournment to executive session regarding personnel, and it's 14-4-405 exemption X.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Henry. City Clerk, will you do the roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 10, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move that council pass Resolution 27, 2017-31, expressing the intention of the governing body of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, to approve the issuance and sale of tax-exempt release revenue bonds on the city's behalf by the To Be Created Nonprofit Building Authority for financing the acquisition and remodeling of real estate property and improvements.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. City staff. Director Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution, we had a earlier resolution back in 2009, and we do have on our, the resolution did allow for establishing building authority. However, that was only for water and sewer funds. So, we're substituting this resolution to put in a new resolution because we're going forth to actually try to create a building authority. State statute allows government entities to do a building authority. What this will allow us to do is another option for financing, and open more creative financing for the government. Right now, there's a lot of LCCC, I think the university takes advantage, the state took advantage of building authority when they did the prison. So, there's a lot of examples in the state that this is something that can do. So, we're, once this resolution is passed, it'll allow us to go forth to try to create a building authority. Our main reason for going for this now is to help us finance the North Campus project. We're going to be using bonding monies for the general fund and for solid waste because we don't have the SRF loan money that's available for water and sewer. So, this will help us finance the entire project. And so, the next step after this would be training the building authority, setting up a nonprofit for them, setting up bylaws, and there's a lot of legal documents that start that process. And we will be coming back with some of those when we get this resolution started. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Director Brown. Counselor Hanson.
Your Honor, we probably should explain to the public the facility that this is dealing with is the North Campus, or the North Building housing, or going to house our whole operations, the fleet operations.
Right. Mayor and Council, the North Campus is at the old Wyotec property, and we're now consolidating public works and some of the parks and mosquito shops to have one location for those buildings.
Any other questions for Director Brown on this? All right. Thank you very much. Any comments from the public on this? Discussion or comments from council on this? All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Henry.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 11, Counselor Polikas.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance, second reading, to provide design standards for garages, to allow for garage, excuse me, to provide design standards for garages, allowing them to, on single-family attached structures, to have a larger percentage of garage doors compared to the overall facade if the home is two stories in height and meets other minimum requirements. I would move to approve original ordinance number 1964, as recommended by the Planning Commission on second reading, in accordance with the findings of facts and conclusions of law, and noting a public hearing was held on May 2nd, 2016.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. Planning Manager Tini.
Mayor and Council, this item before you is on second reading. We have the public hearing this evening, which is required for all ordinances that come before you. As to recap, this is to allow for larger garage doors on two-story dwellings, whether they're single-family or single-family attached. What it provides is additional flexibility in building design. It's fairly standard across the country. I do know the applicant was here, is here. He would be happy, I'm sure, to provide you with any information as well if you have questions for him. Otherwise, this is the same item that you saw at first reading, and we had no comments during first reading. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Tini. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one question. The pictures on, in the attachment, I think it's the last page, is that correct that the first one says house facade currently allowed in Laramie with the two garages in the middle? This is apparently a duplex. But then, it says the other ones are not allowed in Laramie? I thought I had seen stuff like this in Laramie already. The pictures, two and three, especially the picture number two, is that true? Are these pictures correct?
The key is some of the measurements in those pictures that, I mean, they're not in the pictures.
Yeah.
What's important to note is that there's no flexibility for the width of the garage when we start talking about the two-story homes. What you'll see in the first picture, those are your pretty standard duplex. You see those kind of in the, I'll just say, south, like 9th and 13th range area of town. Some of those other pictures there basically incorporate what you see here in the amendment that gives credence to that second story and that creation of mass, so that that garage door is no longer the dominant feature when you kind of go up to that structure. And so, without knowing all the exact measurements, I wouldn't say yes or no to that. But the general concept, which is, I think, what that letter is trying to portray, is true. So...
One more additional question. Do these houses, because it doesn't show the backs, do they have little yards in the back? Or is there, or is it just an alley in the back? Or how do they function? I, you know, I don't find this very pretty, anyway, to have these huge garages in the front. But what do they do in the back?
I think it's very dependent upon the lot size and the lot configuration. You know, if you have a larger lot, that type of a house, whether it's a single-family or single-family attached, so a duplex type, you can have as big of a yard as, you know, a typical single-family home. Obviously, when you look at the two-story, or the attached single-family, there's always going to be some constraints on the yard configuration and things like that. But typically, you know, most of these places have yards. So...
There's basically no requirement how the back of the house has to look?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions for Mr. Tini? All right. Thank you very much. Any comments from the applicant on second reading? All right. Any comments from the public on this? Comments or discussion from council on this? All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 12, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve original ordinance number 1963 on second reading, amending Title 12, Chapter 12, Point 48 of the Laramie Municipal Code for purposes of removing language declaring park use fees as non-refundable, setting the park use fees and damage deposit fees, and incorporating said items into the Parks and Recreation Master Fee Schedule set annually by resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Henry. Ms. Garen?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. As you'll recall, we just had a public hearing on this item, as required for an ordinance change. And we have brought forward two recommended amendments to the ordinance that we presented at our last meeting. It's really two word changes, and let me explain why we're doing it. In Section 6, we change from shall to may collect damaged deposits. That essentially gives us flexibility as to whether or not we physically collect them. And this is so that we can, we can use a process that will be a little more friendly for online collection of damaged deposits. Typically, we don't collect, or we don't retain the damaged deposits. I think we, when I queried our previous director, in 34 years, I think we had retained two deposits, damaged deposits. And the problem we have is if we retain it and put it into city coffers, as opposed to just hold it in a safe, we have to go through and reconcile it and go through the process of refunding it, which is somewhat arduous. With current financial processes, most people would just as soon have a credit card on file, which is what we will do when we're going to an online reservation system as well. So, really, it's an acknowledgement that they're going to have to pay if they damage something, and there, in theory, is a damaged deposit held. Some people may still wish to write us a check that we hold in our safe, but this allows us some flexibility. The other one is in Section 7, and it basically allows us just a little bit more latitude in terms of assessing facilities for the purpose of determining whether there could have been damage. You know, if we have a facility rental on a Friday night, and it's not within that 24 hours, in theory, we could not assess damage. But practically, we are there within 24 hours, and it's just more a matter of not locking ourselves into something where we would get hung up. So, those are the two changes we've proposed. This really is just to streamline our processes and make it more customer-friendly. I take any questions?
I do have a clarification. City Attorney, will we need to do a amendment by substitution to incorporate these changes?
Yes. Yes, Your Honor.
So, we'll be needing that amendment after we have questions, if everybody's okay with that. Counselor Henry.
So, about the 24-hour thing, so what, this is just a big what-if. So, what if I rented it on Friday night, and I left it all clean and tidy, and then on Sunday, someone came and totally destroyed the place? Then, would it be on me? How would the Park Department know whether it was me or some vandals?
Your Honor, members of the council, my understanding, I'm not on the Parks, obviously, but speaking to this, as I understand their process, they have a cleanup period after each rental. I don't know if it's the last rental at the very end of the day, if they go through and clean each facility, but I know we often have them stacked, and so they are in and out of the facilities frequently. And honestly, with only two in 34 years, I don't think that we're typically seeing that kind of problem. It's usually more obvious when it's vandals versus, you know, we just didn't take care of the place, I think. But Director Fieser, I don't know if you have any comments?
No. Any other questions? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, the change from the may to the shall, it doesn't make much sense to me because it sounds kind of capricious to me, you know? You may collect a fee, or you may not collect a fee. You know, that's what this reads to me. And that's not the intent of it. You wanted to say, "We will normally collect a fee under the following circumstances." Isn't that what you want to say? Rather than, you know, may, may sounds like it's up to whoever whim to collect a fee, and that's not what you have in mind, is it?
Ms. Garen.
Mayor, members of council, if you look a little further in that section under G, oh, A, sorry, it says they may waive the damaged deposit requirement. So, really, this is bringing both sections into conformance, because you can't say you shall collect a damaged deposit, and then, well, we may waive it if we want to. It just makes it more consistent.
So, you know, maybe you should add a word like may normally, or something like that, collect a fee, just so it doesn't sound so capricious, so arbitrary, you know? It sounds arbitrary to me to say, "May," or "may not," whatever.
Mayor, just one other clarification. At the next reading, you're also going to see the master fee adoption. It includes both the fee for the facility and the damaged deposit that would be collected. And so, really, what our intent here is to put people on notice that there is a damaged deposit that we normally collect, but we're doing it through a different process. We're not requiring you to write a check that we stick in the safe. We're going to have a damaged deposit, in theory, collected through the collection of their account information that we'll have on file. And so, that just protects us so that we can access a deposit should we need to. But this also allows us to do it through that process, as opposed to something that's a little more structured.
I still suggest you add a word like normally, or something like that, that refers to the rest of that, you know? So, it doesn't sound capricious.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments from the public on this? All right. So, first, is there any desire from council to do an amendment by substitution to incorporate the changes? Counselor Henry?
I would move to do what you just said. Sorry.
amend by substitution?
I would move to amend by substitution this ordinance, number...
Title 12, Chapter... 1963.
1963.
To include the changes as presented?
To include the changes, as introduced by Ms. Garen.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Polikas. City Attorney, will that motion work for you?
That works, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you very much. Any discussion on, specifically on the amendments? From council? Any comments from the public on the amendment by substitution? Any other comments from council on the amendment by substitution? City Clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment by substitution?
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So, now, we have an ordinance as amended, as our original ordinance now. Any other discussion from city council on this second reading? Okay. Any public comment one last time? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please, on the ordinance?
As amended.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Henry.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Moving on to item number 13, Counselor Schuster, please.
Thank you. A lot of people are looking out the window at that really thick rain.
But it is, is it rain, or is it hail?
It's really small hail.
It's may.
The original ordinance, what we have here is the state has made a lot of liquor law changes this year, so we're trying to align everything for what the state has done. So, I move that the council approve original ordinance number 1967, amending Title V of the Municipal Code, 5.08 Special Malt Beverage Permits, and 5.09 Alcoholic Beverages, to divine special malt beverage permit requirements, align municipal code with state statute, adjust fees, make clarifications, and clean up code introduction and first reading.
Do we have a second? I'll suck it. Second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk.
Your Honor, council, we've been talking about this coming for a while, and so here it finally is. So, you'll notice on your cover sheet, under the background section, there are six items that we would like you to focus on. You'll notice in Attachment A, there's several different changes, most of which just have to happen because we have to line up what is in our code with the changes that happen in state statute, which is some wording, changing the word room to building, simple things like that that are, that we really have, we just have to do. It's not worth your time discussing because there really isn't any wiggle room in that. But there are six things that we want to really point out to you that the City of Laramie staff is proposing for you after coming hearing back from your work session on the things that you wanted to see happen, as well as talking with groups from the University of Wyoming, liquor license holders, trying to marry all those desires together to come up with something that will work for the City of Laramie. So, let me just go through them all. So, on pages 1 and 2, you will see, so this is Laramie Municipal Code, 5.08.050, and, or, excuse me, 650, and .680. This is where the special malt beverage permit definition went away in state statute. It basically said the cities, the counties, they can all define what qualifies for getting a special event, or a special malt beverage permit, excuse me, within our city. So, we put in some definitions. These, a lot of these just came from recommendations by the liquor division. So, let me just go through them. First of all, if you look at Attachment A, 5.06.650, Point A, that's just clarifying that the student union at UW is allowed to have their special malt beverage permit, have their special malt beverage permit, currently the only special malt beverage permit the City of Laramie has. Point B lays out some opportunities in which other entities may qualify for getting a special malt beverage permit and if you like these definitions. This is the suggestion for you. So, you'll notice the public auditorium, civic centers, it must be enclosed buildings containing meeting rooms, kitchen facilities, auditorium with a minimum eight hundred-person seating. It could be a stadium or outdoor arena utilized for public events. Everybody obviously has permission and everybody can be served alcohol under the age of twenty-one, are all definers within that one. And then, on page two, you'll see where staff has proposed fees based on the seating capacity of different areas. So, the more capacity that that facility has for seating, the higher the fee would be. So, you'll see that in five point oh eight, point six eight oh, page two of Attachment A. Do we want to go questions in between, or do you want me to, you want to hold off questions to the end?
Actually, I think probably with as complicated as this is, let's do it item by item.
Okay.
If we can. So, any questions specifically on the special malt beverage permit? Counselor Henry?
I do have a question. So, I'm not sure I like that the, to qualify for the public auditorium, civic center, or event center that the seating has to be eight hundred. I think that's excessive, and I think about, like, the Lincoln Community Center, and I think about the Epsom Senior Center, and I don't know, to me, that could qualify as a civic center or, or a, I don't know. What, I don't know if anybody else agrees, but I'm happy to make a motion to lower that number.
City Clerk, did you want to clarify where you got that number from?
Sure.
First, and then I'll go to Counselor Schuster.
I can certainly clarify.
Please.
We looked at facilities that actually get malt beverage permits and catering permits on a regular basis currently, ones that get large amounts of them, and we made sure that the seating encompassed those. Like, the Civic Center is one of the smallest facilities that we have that actually gets permits. Lincoln Community Center might get two permits a year, so that's a hundred dollars total. Right now, it won't be worth it to them to pay a thousand dollars for a special malt beverage permit. So, those smaller venues can still get malt beverage permits, they can still get catering permits for their single-event items, but if they're not having a large volume of events, it's going to be cost prohibitive for them to even get this permit anyway. It doesn't prohibit their ability to get those permits at all.
So, they can still get a, they can still get a malt beverage permit?
Yeah, oh, a 24-hour one.
It's a 24-hour one.
Mm-hmm. So, I think Lincoln Community Center might do ten events a year, so...
So, what if you wanted to have a two- or three-day event? Would you have to get three permits? And can you do those contiguous like that?
Yes. Your Honor, Counselor Henry, yes, you can get multiple-day permits. You pay per 24-hour period. And usually, those smaller events, it's the entity that is hosting the event that's paying for it, not the Lincoln Community Center themselves. So, there's less risk in some of those smaller entities to maybe not even want one because they have to bank on a certain number of groups coming in to pay them back to be able to afford that. Where if they just get the 24-hour permits, however many they need in a row, the entity that's renting the facility pays for that, and then there's no risk for those smaller buildings and facilities like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think for these discussions, it might help for the public and council, if you can remember, if you can remind us, for example, the special malt beverage permit, who would use that and what, what is the use for that? That way, we can all kind of stay on the same page
Sure.
As we go through all this. That would be awesome.
Sure. So, a special malt beverage permit can only be used, they can only produce, use kegs, so it has to be beer produced out of a keg. It's the only thing that can be served under a special malt beverage permit. So, any groups that want to come in and have wine or spirits or anything like that, this would not allow them to do that. They need a catering permit in order to make that happen. So, it's a very focused, limited kind of permit, and there's probably a very small market for groups that even want to have this permit. It, in this permit, it could, some details need be worked out, but the goal in setting it up the way that we did was so that if UW wanted to have a special malt beverage permit for the stadium or the AA, that there is, is an opportunity for them to do that. There's some other details that have to be worked out in that, one being that the trustees of the University of Wyoming may only have one permit, and they already have one at the union. So, it would have to be another entity that would
Do that.
Do that. So, that's a, that's a specific, more complicated situation, but we are at least setting up this side of it so that if we could work through the other details, it would be set up to accommodate for that.
Fair enough. Counselor Schuster was first.
Basically, she explained everything I wanted to say because the people that are getting the malt beverage permits right now, nothing's changing for them. They're limited so many to get so many a year by each specific group, but other than that, they could do something of that nature, so...
Counselor Hanson?
I think, thank you, Your Honor. You touched upon it, that I think we've had events before where people would serve beer and wine.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing else, beer and wine. That goes with a catering permit, am I correct? So, you can have, whatever, bottled beer and decanter wine out of a bottle, et cetera, at an event. That's not changed. That's the way it's always been, right?
City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, correct. That doesn't affect that at all. That is a catering, an alcohol catering permit. It can only be pulled by retail and resort liquor license holders.
Correct.
And then, they can have, they can host those. It's, it's to allow them to host events off of their own premise.
And, and this was the eight hundred persons, et cetera, it's not affected by this at all?
It's a, Your Honor, through Counselor Hanson, it's a completely separate situation.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on special malt beverage? Counselor Henry?
I just want to point out a Scrivener's error on, at five point zero eight, point seven zero zero, consumption in, oh, I thought I saw something that said "dispending room". Maybe it was somewhere else. Sorry.
City Attorney?
If I may, Mayor, and I direct this to all, all councilors, including Counselor Henry, Angie did yeoman's work on, on taking a thirty-five-page document and trying to make all these changes. When, when I looked it over with her, we were reading that thirty-five-page document with changes, things lined out, things grayed out. I would suggest that Angie and I, looking at this document, see Scrivener's errors or things that don't quite flow as they should in the English language. And so, now that we see it this way, by second reading, we will clear up those kinds of grammatical or English language errors. We will also do whatever you direct on substantive matters, but I, but I did want to, it's a good point, Counselor, and I did want to point out that that's the issue that we've been working through, too.
And we discovered two of them already.
Mm-hmm. I think it would make good sense to keep a list of those as you see them, and instead of bringing them up tonight,
Okay.
We'll just make sure councilors send you their list to make sure we get all of them
Right.
That everybody sees. Counselor Polikas?
I think I'm correct on this. I just want to make sure I am. The special malt beverage permit would be what the university has requested for the serving alcohol at the football games and basketball games. Am I correct on that?
City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counselor Polikas, no, not at this time. Right now, at this time, the University of Wyoming is set up to work through a local retail license holder to acquire alcohol catering permits because they're going to sell beer and wine.
So, this would be,
So, this is not...
This would be an option for them if they chose to go a different route?
We're working towards setting it up to be an option for them. There's some more pieces that would need to hap, happen, and some details we'd need to work out, but we're moving in that direction to give them that, that option if that's what they want to do. They certainly don't have to. They can continue what they're doing now, which is using the alcohol catering permits through a retail license holder.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item, please.
Okay, number two, if you look at page three, five point zero nine, point zero one zero, under definitions, we have added, in, in some of our discussions, there was some confusion about what if we have a multi-unit building, how, and suddenly, it becomes the dispensing building. How do we help define that out? And it really was not described at all in state statute. So, we put a definition in here ourselves to aid staff, to aid the public in understanding how we're going to deal with that situation. So, a licensed building means a building or portion of a building with a single address. If a multi-unit or multi-use building contains an establishment with a liquor license, the city manager or designee may define a portion of the building as the licensed building. So, for example, if you have something in a strip mall and it, somehow, it's confusing as to where that license lies, that it allows staff to make some kind of clarification that, that, that restaurant in the strip ball, strip mall, the license stops at the wall in which the restaurant stops. Or if you're, we're talking downtown where we have residences above a licensed area, that if there's any confusion as far as where that a license is allowed to go, that staff may provide some clarification on that. That's the sole use for that item.
Any questions on that?
The, the second paragraph simply means they could close on Sundays or something like that. Is that what is implied there on an ongoing weekly basis, but so-and-so many days a week open, et cetera? That's what's implied here.
City Clerk?
Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, yes, that's a change that was made by the state statute, so we simply mirrored that in their definition.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Next.
All right. Number three is pages three point through five, and that is all your fees. So, currently, your fees are all defined in ordinance. We proposed minor increases in fees in which we are allowed by statute to increase the fee. So, if the fee, if there's not an increase in the fee or a change in the fee suggested, that means we're at the maximum allowed by state statute.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on those?
Could you go through a little bit of the process that you went through to come to the recommendations that you have, please?
Sure. My thought process in, in going through this, I did solicit, you know, comments from liquor license holders, didn't really receive much on the fee area. They, the couple that did actually address it said, you know, minor increases did seem somewhat reasonable. They didn't want to see a large jump in the fees. You know, they need a budget and plan as well, too. I thought it would be more prudent just to give a small increase, and then, in a few years, we can look at if we need to adjust those again or not. It has been ten years since these fees have been changed. So, we did look at some minor ones. The limited retail license, that's your club license. That's your VFW, your Moose, your Eagles, your Elk, those groups. So, we just did a hundred-dollar increase on those. Those are mostly service groups. And my reasoning in only doing a small increase on those is that they do a lot for our community, and I don't want, certainly want to cut into what they're providing for the community by giving them a big, huge jump in fee increases. Restaurant licenses, we just increased by two hundred and fifty dollars a year. The malt beverage and catering permits, these are those 24-hour ones that we were talking about before. They've traditionally been fifty dollars for the last ten years, so we just proposed an increase of ten dollars a time. The 24-hour extra dispensing room permit, that's going away. We're not allowed to do that anymore now that the dispensing room has become the dispensing building. There's no need for that anymore, so we won't be collecting any more of those. Under special malt beverage permit, you'll see that I add, the one hundred is the union building. You'll see that I added two four thousand dollars, depending on the location and type, that was listed out in page two of your attachment A, depending on their occupancy. So, that's the range in which that fee could land, depending on, on where they qualify. Bar and grill licenses, we did increase that one quite a bit more. We are getting the six additional bar and grill licenses. We have three thousand dollars proposed for year one of a bar and grill, and then, two thousand dollars on a renewal. This is a more premium license than that restaurant license, so that was the, the reasoning behind charging a little bit more for that license.
That's what you recommended.
The additional dispensing room fee goes away. We will no longer be collecting fees on additional dispensing rooms. You'll see in your cover sheet that we'll have a lost revenue of about twenty-five hundred dollars from the changes that the state made, and mostly, it's due to these additional dispensing rooms. And then, that hotel motel minibar fee also goes away with the state statute changes. And then, under B, right under the fees, we did propose an increase in the application fee from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars for all licenses.
Questions on fees? Counselor Henry?
Just a question about hotel motel minibar. Why is that going away, and what will they be able to do in, in its place?
Your Honor, Counselor Henry, that's going away because state statute now allows them to have minibars in all the rooms without paying any additional fee.
Oh, okay.
So, before, the hotels had to, their, their bar was limited to just one small location on their facility. They could have a little temporary bars here and there, but they could not have minibars in the rooms. Now, they're allowed to have that without an additional fee, according to state statute.
Because it encompasses the whole building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just a suggestion under A, sort of a statement, unless otherwise stated, these are annual fees, because it's, you know, some of them, you state that they are per period, 24-hour period, and so on, but most fees, it doesn't say anything. So, I think we'd clarify it by saying, "These fees are annual unless otherwise stated."
Let's talk about it.
Something of that nature. So, everybody knows it's not a monthly fee, it's not a whatever fee, okay?
Vice Mayor?
So, I'm wondering what council's thoughts are, or what your thoughts are, on moving this fee schedule out of the ordinance and to a master fee list? Is that, is that a option or a thought? I guess I'm interested in, you know, reasons that we maybe should and shouldn't think about this.
City Clerk?
It is certainly something that we believe you can consider. If that is something that you want to do, we'll confirm before second reading that it absolutely is okay, and then prepare your second reading version of Attachment A to reflect that, if that's what you would like to do. But as far as, as we've been able to find so far, that is allowable.
Okay. Can I keep?
Yeah, please.
So, the reason I think we might want to talk about that is just for ease of changes and what council's thoughts are, are on that. And maybe, I don't necessarily think we need to make an amendment tonight, but I think we, we could at least have some discussion. I don't know if you want to talk about that now, Mayor, or, or when, but I think we need to consider that.
Oh, City Attorney?
Mayor, if, if I might suggest, we are confirming, and I, I'm sure this is doable, that we could put our fees in a, in a separate fee schedule that could be amended by resolution. Obviously, that gives you speed and flexibility should a fee be too high, or should a fee be too low, or there's some other problem. What I'd suggest for tonight, or I think guidance for me and staff, is to know this, if, if you'd like us to go in that direction, we can bring you a proposed amendment on second reading, and we will confirm the legality and propriety of that. But, but, so primarily, so we need that A, and then, second, your substantive guidance on, on the fee numbers themselves.
Okay. Counselor Henry?
So, I was just, I think that's an excellent idea because it would save us from having to change the entire ordinance on three readings. I think it's a really good idea, Jane. I, I would go with that.
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you refresh my memory? We had a work session on this previous. We had some discussion. I'm a little concerned about the bar and grill license increase, fifteen hundred to three thousand. Could you just discuss what your feeling is on that?
Sure. The thought process on that one was based on the discussion during the work session. There was even discussion of possibly going up to the maximum allowed of ten thousand dollars for a bar and grill. That seems like it might be a little bit of, of a jump. So, I tried to propose or give you an option that did increase it so it was more than a restaurant license, so that folks that were serious about wanting to actually have a bar and grill and run it as a bar and grill could, you know, commit to it this way. It's certainly up to you. This was just my suggestion, in that that one's max is, is significantly higher than the three thousand that we are even pro- 3,000 that we are even proposing. So, it's the will of the council on this one.
Counselor Schuster.
I really like that. We had talked about raising it to 10, said I would not support it at that time, and now you're saying that it's a 3,000 initial fee for the year's time, and then if they renew it, it drops back down to 2. So, I really like that. If they're going to invest in it, that's great. As long as they do more than one year, it's going to drop back down to a decent fee. So, I'm quite happy with that. Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions on the fees. So, the first thing I know we discussed in the work session is trying to analyze what the city is charging for fees versus what it's costing the city to administer these permits that are required by state law. So, do we have an analysis of how much time the city clerk's office spends and how much it costs the city of Laramie to administer these programs? I'm assuming we don't yet, but I think it would be very important to this discussion. So, that's question number one. So, is that, is that something that's possible where we could get in the ballpark of how much time the clerk's office is spending, and how much it's costing, and how much we're taking in in fees to compensate that? And that's just the clerk's office. I have other questions about the PD and everything else.
Yes, Your Honor, as you mentioned, it is much more than the clerk's office that gets involved in these licenses. We have not done any analysis. I don't, I'm not really sure how we would be able to give you some really hard, accurate numbers on that because the work in the clerk's office is so mixed and intertwined with so many different things. I don't think we're coming close to covering the cost of the clerk's office.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Portion of the alcohol licenses.
City Manager, do you have a thought on that?
Mayor, Council, we could try to put together some analysis. I think the clerk is correct. It's difficult because every permit can require a different amount of time to consider. But just for reference, I can share a few numbers off the top of my head. We could try to pull some time estimates. That's where I'd start with that kind of analysis together, per permit, per a typical permit. But, you know, the operation of the clerk's office is about a $260,000 a year endeavor for the clerk and the deputy clerk, and I would estimate at least half of their time is involved in liquor license administration, whether that's episodic permits or the annual permits. I don't know if Angie agrees, but I would also know every time we get what I call an individual liquor permit, it does have review. The clerk's office facilitates that review. It's reviewed by the police department, it's reviewed by the fire department, it's reviewed by the street department, because many of these events are, you know, thank you, they have impacts well out into our public rights and way or public safety ramifications. So, we could try to pull some time analysis together to, maybe an estimate of how much time goes into administering and finally approving each permit, if you'd like, for second reading. But I think Angie is correct in that it would not be precise, but could give you a ballpark to inform your decision.
Well, thank you. And my second piece of that question is that we also have other departments. Our PD obviously spends a significant amount of time doing enforcement activities, DUIs, that kind of stuff that's all related to the sale of alcohol in the community. So, I mean, ideally, instead of trying to pull numbers out of thin air, we would be able to have some type of concrete layer to say, this is how much it's costing the city. If you're going to sell alcohol and you're going to use alcohol, then we want, we should have a program that pays for itself in that respect. I don't think that we'll get close to that. I think that the PD cost would be extravagant, but I think it would be important to know, to try to sort out anything we can. We do it with community development and the fees that we charge there, based on, you know, how long does the application take? Is it more in-depth, that kind of stuff? So, I'd really like to see an analysis. And for the City Manager, if there's anything that we can contribute to that from PD that would be relevant, I think that that would be important. I know other departments do some reviews, but PD is the one that comes to mind that spends the most time on this type of related stuff, even if it's just enforcement doing compliance checks at the establishments that have liquor licenses. That's all done by PD.
Vice Mayor.
So, in addition to that, I'd really like to see what are some comparator states charging for these type of fees? Because I find them to be extremely reasonable based on my past history in the business, and I think, I think we need to know what other parts of, or what other states are charging, especially communities. I mean, maybe we can focus in on communities with universities or not, or, I don't know, but I think we just need to do some comparative pricing on our fees.
And I will add one more thing to that, and is I would love to know when the last time was that all of these fees were updated. So, if a restaurant license was, is it $1,500 now? If it's $1,500, how long has it been $1,500? Because if it's been $1,500 for 20 years, that's a substantially, that should probably be a substantially different number to account for inflation and everything else. So, I would like to know when those were last changed for all of those, that we could look at that as well.
It says 10 years on the thing.
Any other thoughts? Counselor Polikas?
I had a question on the same line. There's a variable rate for your special use malt beverage permits, the yearly permit, and it's based upon, it's based upon, the way it's presented, it's based upon capacity of the event, of the arena, or the place. What was the thinking behind? I mean, it's substantial. It's the same permit, same processing fees, and so forth and so on. What is the reasoning behind having such a large difference between the various sizes of areas?
Your Honor, Counselor Polikas, the fees that I proposed came up from comparing the number of events that typically happen with alcohol at the facilities that we have in town at those different occupancies. So, looking at the stadium, the number of dispensing locations they're going to have this fall, the number of games, what they're, what they're going to be spending in alcohol catering permit fees already, and the size of their facility, and then base that off of that. So, the fee that I proposed for the stadium size is pretty much the same as what it would cost them to get catering malt beverage, or catering alcohol permits, alcohol catering permits, excuse me, under our current system. So, it's basically a crossover. I tried to make it very similar to what would be going on. Similarly, looked at the AA, the number of dispensing locations, which is far fewer than the stadium, but they have more games, and went by their seating, and did some research on seating capacity on all these different locations, and then looked at our history.
Could you call for your auditorium instead of AA?
Yes.
That might really throw some people off.
And then did a similar comparison to other facilities around, and what they currently pulled for malt beverage and catering permits, and made all those fees comparable to what they're already putting out in finances.
Thank you.
So, one last question for council on this topic. Is there any objection from anybody on bringing an amendment forward to pull the fees out of the ordinance and put them on a master fee schedule? Is anybody very opposed to that?
No. Sounds good. Counselor Polikas? I guess, you're going to propose an amendment now?
No, I just wanted to get a consensus before we give the City Attorney marching orders to possibly prepare an amendment to bring fees. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a lot of council that would be opposed to it.
This would be in two weeks' time, so we can think about it.
Right. Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Is that okay? City Attorney, you have those marching orders?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on fees?
I think it's a smart idea, so we can change that separately without changing the whole darn ordinance again.
City Clerk, any other questions on fees? All right, City Clerk, next item, or next section.
All right. The next item is page nine of the hours of operation. So, this is 5.09.425. The, currently, the state of Wyoming removed any definition or any restriction on the hours of operation across the state. They left it up to the counties and cities to determine what those hours of operation were going to be. Therefore, we proposed hours of operations that are, that is the same as which we are doing right now. So, you'll look on point A, on all days, licensees, we had to obviously change room to building, but it will remain the 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM timeframe, employees leaving the building by 2:30 AM. That's all currently in your Laramie municipal code, and that is what state statute said previously. So, we proposed to leave that in there. I did add item C, which there is a B. I just pulled it out for simplicity, so you didn't have the whole thing. You'll see that in a lot of places where they're missing items in attachment A. I'm sorry, I'm diverging, but let me clarify. There is, on the council Intranet, there is the entire ordinance. I sent out an email with a link to it. The entire ordinance, the whole liquor law, all of chapter five, is in its entirety on your council Intranet. It's a much longer document, but if you want to see it all encapsulated with everything, it's there. But it gets a little complicated, and you have several pages of nothing happening. So, attachment A just only includes items in which there were changes proposed. So, sorry, going back to...
So, that's why we have a number C now instead of B?
Right, because there's no change in B. So, an establishment may request an exception to the hours of employees may be present in the building. There is an establishment that requested, they do a lot of baking, and they requested, you know, if we have the ability and if the council is willing to allow them to start that employee before 6:00 AM, so they can get some of the baking, more baking done early. So, this will allow the City Manager or designee to look at a situation, whatever their situation is, if it's a reasonable reason to allow employees to be there during closed hours, we will have that. The police department will be notified who is and is not allowed to be in that building at that time for enforcement, but it does allow, since the state opened it up, it does offer a little more flexibility to our establishments. Any questions on that one?
Questions? Counselor Schuster.
I wanted to thank you because we discussed this. I contacted her personally and said that I would like to see it stay the same, even though the state removed the definition of hours. That means that we didn't do anything. Bars could run 24 hours a day, and I don't think people really, really understood this. So, I felt we had to have this in the... Your exemption idea is a very good idea. I realize that a Safeway, a Walmart is going to lock those doors, and whenever they deem they want to close the liquor part down, but your Walmart runs 24 hours a day. So, I mean, you have to have something like that, since that is a building inside a building. So, yes, I understand having fresh baked products and everything else, how some of the groups, a restaurant that serves breakfast in the morning, but might have a full liquor license, would absolutely have to have this for them to be able to go in and start prepping for the day, because when my dad had the business here in town, the grocery store, there was never not people in there. The stocking crew started at the minute the door closed, that they could block all the aisles and be stocking stuff. The bakery came in at 4:00 AM. I mean, everything was just a cycle there. There was never a time when the entire building was empty. So, I understand this request very much in that. Thank you.
Counselor Shumway.
The county commissioners have already discussed the state's changes, and they've made some suggestions. I think we should reflect the same as they have, because I believe that they had a 6 to 2, with the exception of Sunday, 6 to midnight, and if we change ours from 6 to 2 on Sunday, they're going to have people shopping alcohol on Sunday. I think we need to reflect the same as they do. So, I'd like to, if, I'd like to have that reflected, and if it takes amendment, I'll propose that amendment.
Your Honor.
Please.
The county has had those hours for quite a while. Many years, and we have had the 6 to 2 for many years. So, we've had that conflict for quite a long time. The county did look at what we proposed and were bringing to you, and they mirrored a lot of what we did, but they wanted to maintain their shorter hours on a Sunday. If you decide to do a shorter hour on a Sunday, that would be a new thing for you, but it's not a new thing for the county. So, just keep...
The police department, whether or not that has been a problem in the differing hours between the county and the city, and then I'll hold off on making that amendment until the third reading, if it's something that we could have at least some contact there so we know if there is a problem.
Good evening. I'm Robert Terry, I'm the Assistant Police Chief for the city of Laramie. Thank you for having me. As far as your question goes, my personal experience working midnights and evening shift through the weekends, I can't really say there was any impact of, say, Centennial, or bars in Centennial closing at midnight and us staying open later, but I'd have to get back to you if you were requesting any specific statistics. So, I don't know if that really answers much of your question, but...
Counselor Schuster.
I don't know this, because I've never out that late, but most of the bars close earlier on Sunday. Do we have a bar that's even open past midnight in this town? Somebody's shaking their head yes in the audience. I'm yes, we do. But I didn't even know that we even had a bar that was open past midnight inside the city limits.
Patrons.
Sundays.
I guess, wow, okay. I'm a little naive.
It sounds like we might want a little bit more clarification from that, if you could let us know next.
Absolutely.
Next reading, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I, like I said during our work session related to this, I would not have a problem supporting a 3 or 3:30 closing time if, if I could get support from, from council on You know, and maybe we need, you know, Laramie PD to, you know, chime in on their opinion related to that, but if, if folks are willing, I can, I can, I'd be more than happy to bring forward an amendment related to that. We may want to hear from our public, or, you know, some owners of establishments, or the university back there that might be cringing at my comments, but, but, but that's, that's my personal opinion, and we'll see, we'll see what folks have to say about that.
And I think it would be appropriate for council, we never, questions in our discussions, but let's do amendments after we hear from the public, I think would be an appropriate process for tonight. Counselor Henry.
So, just because we set the hours, like if we do what Counselor Pierce says, and we extend those open hours, it's still up to each establishment as to when they want to say when they're going to be open and when they close, correct?
City Clerk, please.
Your Honor, Counselor Henry, yes, that is correct. I know that there are folks back there that have some, some very deeply thought feelings on that item, and I know they'll have some things that they'll want to share to you when we're done with the, this staff and council question section, so I'll just warn you of that. Not in a bad way.
Counselor Hanson, anything else on the other?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, it strikes me, there's a lengthy section B in between there, and then section C actually picks up already what it says in, or deals with what it says in section A. So, I would suggest to simply attach your section C to section A as the rest of it, because it says there, you know, dispensing room for all persons other than employees by 2:30 AM, and an exception, and an exception may request, because that belongs together. Instead of have another whole lengthy section in between there, and then pick that up at the end, that's the same dealing with employees being there longer than 2:00 AM. So, just for logic's sake, I would just attach it to the rest of section A and be done with it.
Any other comments or questions on hours? Counselor Polikas.
On that same subject, I, why do we have to have anything in there when it already states that employees can be there after 2 o'clock in the original, without changes?
No, but it ends by 2:30.
No, it does not, not for employees.
On A.
In A, it does.
All persons other than employees by 2:30 AM.
Oh, yeah, it does.
So, in essence, it's already stated that employees can be there after 2:30 AM, so I'm confused as to why we even need to add anything more to it.
City Attorney, do you have any thoughts on this, please?
Yes, Your Honor, but, you know, that's...
Yes, Your Honor, but, you know, that's a good point, Counselor Plakus.
Good point. I think you're right.
I guess what, I'll read it again after the meeting, but I guess if the point is that we want to prohibit things from happening after 2:30 a.m., I think we could say sale or service of alcohol, and then we don't mind if the employees are still there as long as there's no alcohol involved. They could be cleaning, they could be baking, they could be doing whatever.
Counselor Schuster?
In my past life, when I was in college, I did work at a bar, and the last thing you did is you cleaned everything and restocked it for the next night before you left. So there was a lot of times you could have been there an additional two hours working, but there was not any alcohol involved because you wanted to get gone. You didn't want to be there doing anything else.
I have one comment on that, and that is that if we need to rework this section, I think we need to be very careful and be very specific, because I know there are concerns from the community about having to just stopping sales and service at 2:00 and allowing patrons to hang out there, because then that creates problems with Safe Ride and getting them home, and it elongates the...
No, not with...
All of that stuff. So I just want to make sure that we're specific to why they could be in the building and what they could be doing. That would be my thought on that.
To restock, to clear, to clean up.
Whatever we need to do on that.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on that section? Okay, City Clerk, next section.
Okay, in nine point, or, excuse me, 5.09.445 gambling, gambling on license premise, we are proposing that you leave in, even though the state statute took out this section, there is nothing that prohibits you from keeping it in here for clarity's sake. So we offered it to you. And that is up to council.
Questions on this section? Counselor Hanson?
You're changing this because now the, the room is larger, right? It can't be the building, so that's why you changed it to premise, right?
Correct, and that's why we had to change it to Laramie Municipal Code and pull out state, just the reference to state statutes, so...
Okay, makes sense.
Vice Mayor, did you have a thought?
So, you can obviously tell where I've spent some time. So if you have a, you know, you pick a spot on a board for the Super Bowl game, is that by definition gambling?
City Attorney? I'll let the City Clerk off the hook on that one.
Maybe, Mayor, maybe.
Maybe. And so we're going to regulate something that's not regu, or...
Yeah, look, this would not be a change to our current standard. What they, what they did at the state level was take the prohibition of gambling out of the state statutes. So up until, you know, up through June 30th, you're prohibited from gambling in a bar. We are going to keep that, or the proposal is to keep that in the Laramie ordinances. So we are not changing anything, we're not making anything more stringent, we are not... So this is no change. If, if, if we have been, if I've ever been asked to look at, or if I'm ever asked to look at, you know, Super Bowl pools in bars, I'll render an opinion then. I've not thought of it yet.
Or Kentucky Derby.
Or, Mayor Counselor Pierce, I probably don't have your experience at this, but dice games, I've, I've heard it happens. And so I'm not trying to be flippant about this. You know, there are law enforcement priorities that then come to me, and I can give opinions about gambling that's certainly come up in the past about raffle, certain kinds of raffles, who's running them, where they're running them. So it is, can certainly be a serious issue with people, bar owners, who don't want to run afoul of the law, and I have to address those on a case-by-case basis. So, we don't, we're not changing anything here that, you know, that's existed for 30 years in Laramie, if this proposal's accepted.
Counselor Shumway?
Well, I'm in favor of leaving this in, but I have a couple of questions. I, I understand that this would prohibit dice games, poker games, such in a bar. What about the sale of Lotto tickets? What about pull tabs? And what about the horse, horse, you know, where they viewed on TV, that kind of stuff?
City Attorney?
Mayor Counselor Shumway? I'm not sure. Some of those are regulated at the state level, who has a license to sell Lotto tickets, who can participate in that, and where they can participate in it. And I'm not sure, the answer to your question. I'm not sure about the off-track betting or the historical horse racing stuff that I don't even understand. And so I've not done that analysis, and it's hard for me to answer that question. I, I mean, I can, I can take a guess on the lottery stuff, which is that's heavily regulated at the state level on where that can be sold. But I can look into that, Counselor.
Counselor Hanson?
I have no idea, does the word gambling imply money, that there's money involved? Because I was just thinking, four people sitting at a table playing pinacco, are they gambling? No, I mean, I don't think they are, are they?
City Attorney, we're getting closer to an opinion.
We, without dragging up the statute, is, it's to get something of value dependent partly upon chance.
Yeah. That's the idea, right? Something of value changes hands, right? Okay.
Lotto. So it sounds like we might need a little clarification on the gambling section.
I'll work on that.
And I have one question to add to that. In addition to taking this out of the state statute, and I apologize, I don't remember the, the section number of state statute, they also stripped the provision for a city to suspend a license for basically finding out a bar is allowing gambling or prostitution. We've taken that tool out of the toolbox. Is it possible to put that tool back in the toolbox here locally? City Attorney?
Mayor, I believe so, yes. That's what, that's what we're doing. We're keeping that, that's the point of this, is to try to keep that tool in our toolbox.
And my question is, so the provision that we're keeping here, it only assigns points, so if somebody is in violation of this code, they get 10 points to their license, whereas the other section of state statute allowed for an immediate suspension upon verification or charging of criminal activity.
And Mayor, I'll have to track that through.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Any other questions on this section? Okay. I'm keeping a list for you too. Next section.
Excuse me, I was writing a note there.
You're fine.
Okay, so we are on item number six. The last major topic for you is regarding minors allowed in dispensing rooms. Now that it has changed to dispensing buildings, we now need to address what you do and do not want allowed in establishments within the city of Laramie. So, I'll just go through this for the edification of, of the public as well.
Please.
Except as provided in the sections, no licensee or agent, employee, or server thereof shall knowingly permit any person under the age of 21 years to enter or remain in the licensed building where alcoholic or malt beverages are dispensed in an establishment that provides adult entertainment or is primarily for on-premise consumption where the primary source of revenue from the operation of the sale of alcoholic or malt beverage unless... So this, this first section prohibits minors in any dispensing building unless they qualify for one of the six following things. The establishment is operating a restaurant with a commercial kitchen where the primary source of revenue from the operation is from the sale of food. So this will include our folks that, yeah, your Applebee's, places that function as a restaurant. Your, all of your bar and grills will be included in this because they must have 60% at least of food to be a bar and grill. So any restaurant, any bar and grill, any retail license that really is functioning like a restaurant or a bar and grill. So any place that a family would take their, their family to, to get a meal, and the adults want to have an alcoholic beverage, minors will be allowed in those, in those facilities. Number two, the establishment operates a commercial kitchen but whose primary source of revenue from the operation is from the sale of alcoholic or malt beverage, of malt beverage, persons under the age of 21 years may enter or remain in licensed building until the hour of 8:00 p.m. So you may have places that function a little more like a bar, their, their primary source of revenue is from alcoholic beverages. If the council wishes to, they may allow minors to go into those facilities until the hour of 8:00 p.m. Now, establishments could limit that all the time anyway. You have one down the road here on Fourth Street that functions very much like a restaurant. Currently, no minors are allowed in it at all because of how it's set up. The whole building is its dispensing room. They may maintain that, they may not. So tho, those facilities still have complete control over whether or not they're going to allow mi, or if they're, if they do not want to allow minors into their facility. So it doesn't force anybody. But so that would allow something, like if you have a facility downtown that functions more like a bar, but they have a commercial kitchen that serves a limited menu, you could allow minors to go in there and watch a game with the parents or something like that until the hour of 8:00 p.m. That's an option for you. The establishment holds a limited retail license, which is a club. This was a change by the state to allow all club. So that's your VFW, that's your American Legion, that's all of your service organization clubs are allowed to have minors in their facilities. The establishment obtains approval by city council. So there's a couple establishments in town. One carries primarily wine, and they also have merchandise for sale. So that might be a situation where the city council wants to allow them to have minors in their store, to go buy a kitchen appliance for their mother, even if they're under the age of 21, and not necessarily require the parents to go with them. You also have a bowling alley in town. That, that becomes the whole facility. They don't have, I don't know if they would qualify as a commercial kitchen. They, if they do, they may not have the majority of their revenue from food. And so that might be a situation where there are youth leagues that I would guess go past 8:00 p.m. sometimes for bowling leagues. And so there, there is an opportunity in item number four for city council to take into account some of those specialized situations and decide what your, your goal is as far as allowing minors in those facilities. Number five, the minor under the age of 21 is accompanied by his or her parent or guardian who is at least 21 years of age, and the licensed area is for the sale of alcoholic or malt beverages for off-premise consumption and separate from any area for on-premise consumption. This is currently how the law reads. So, a parent can bring their minor into any package store in Laramie right now and purchase whatever they want to purchase, and that is allowable right now. So it would maintain that ability. Number six, in the case where a liquor license is held by a grocery or retail store, minors under the age of 21 are allowed in the areas of the store where alcoholic or malt beverages are not sold. The way the state statute has opened it up, they will no longer have to have a separate room with a door for their package stores, if, say if there's a new grocery store or something that comes into town. They could simply have an area of the store which is distinguished for alcoholic beverages. And so, we want to make clear that, that, that doesn't become their entire building, that there's any confusion whatsoever, that kids can't go into Walmart without a parent just because they have a package store in the back of the store. So that's the clarification for number six. And then, so clarifying on part B, that establishments that operate primarily for off-premise sales shall maintain a separate area for the sale of alcoholic or malt beverages. So it could be a room, it could be an area of the store. The alcoholic beverages just cannot be intermixed within the store next to candy, next to toys, things like that. And that's referenced, that's a new change in state statute. And then C, minors are not allowed to be seated at a bar from which malt or alcoholic beverages are dispensed in any licensed building. This is a request that came out of your work session, I included it for you as an option.
Questions on this section? Counselor Hanson?
I'm not understanding this section, this A6, in the case where a liquor license is held by a grocery store, right? Minors under the age of 21 are allowed in the areas of the store where alcoholic malt, malt beverages are not sold?
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, let's say I take my three-year-old, I don't have one of those anymore, but still, anyway, I go to the liquor section to pick out some, some wine or beer or something like that, I have to leave the little kid outside?
Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, if you look at number five, number five will allow you to take the three-year-old in there with you.
Yeah.
Six says that my 17-year-old can go to Walmart and shop without me, as long as she stays out of the alcohol section.
Oh, oh, this is by themselves, by themselves.
Yes, yes. Five says that she can go into the package store with me.
Okay, the case...
Some of these stores have aisles and no walls.
Well, that's right.
So if you go back into a certain area, you're in the liquor section without going through a door, just because you went down that aisle.
Good.
So what it says is, the minor can go into the rest of the store as long as they stay out of those aisles.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Other questions on this section?
Unclear to me.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, so I think, I think we're getting slightly restrictive here, especially on A2 regarding remaining in the licensed building until the hour of 8:00 p.m. That's a little concerning to me. I think we could, could raise that or just let it up to the establishment. I think there's some things in here we could just let the establishment decide and make it a little bit easier on us.
I think that there's, might be some issues with that. City Clerk, can you give us an example of where this might be more, where this would be an issue?
Absolutely. Your Honor, counsel, there are establishments within the city of Laramie that I'm sure would love to allow their minors to be in their building at any time. We have experience with some of them in which there are high levels of underage consumption that happens in those facilities. If, if we are, if we allow minors to be in what is primarily a bar, we are certainly losing our control that we currently have, because right now we are able to provide those establishments with a special event permit for very specific events on very specific days, and they have to meet very specific requirements in order to be allowed to have minors in the bar. If we lose that ability, we lose control over what will and will not be allowed in that bar to happen. We have had some very recent situations in which permits were pulled for too much underage consumption happening on the facility.
Can I keep going? So, I mean, that, whether they're allowed there to stay until 8:00 p.m. or 9:00 p.m. or even 10:00 p.m., I mean, we're talking about a problem that should have been checked at the door or determined before the person even walked into the building, right? I mean, if you've got minors consuming in a bar, they should have had their IDs checked at the door, right? Am I wrong? I mean, unless I don't get it.
I think we should invite the police department up here. City Attorney, do you have a comment, and then?
Yeah, let's...
Assistant Keith Terry, please.
Mayor and counsel, the biggest, I guess, example that comes to my mind is Lovejoy's. So Lovejoy's pretty much operates as a restaurant up until the hours, I believe, of 9:00 p.m., and then they have the minors, they leave. And if you've been in there, you know, after hour, or not after hours, but after 9:00 p.m., it turns into a bar. They do have a doorman, he checks IDs, but it turns more into a bar situation. And of course, they have a commercial grill, so that's, that's the, I guess, example I can think of that's probably more specific to that item.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I will, I mean, I can't stress enough, Mayor, how much this is a policy decision for council. I don't think it's a matter of staff trying to advocate for one position or another. I think that staff was trying to listen to the work session and see where you might want to go. So let's, I want to establish that as a base level. As we talked about that work session, you can have no... As we talked about that work session, you can have no rule. And minors can go into any place with a liquor license. That would, that can be your choice. So I think that this is, we picked a starting place so you can start to give us guidance and make a decision on this issue. Of course, there are issues, enforcement issues. And I can hear, you know, Assistant Chief can talk about this. Enforcement issues if 18-year-olds are, or whatever age, I don't, are in any establishment at midnight. But that's a policy decision. There are policing issues and then licensing issues when we, when we get the violations. But that's completely a policy decision. So we don't, we are not, I mean, the Assistant Chief may have some, some views on that or thoughts or guidance, but the, but these are, this is truly your decision. But this is one of the critical decisions we're making.
Counselor Schuster, I know you had a comment.
Yes, the law is going with both what they have said. Ninety percent of the kids are doing the right thing. Our biggest problem is on the 10% that do want to drink. And, and they're out there. And I know that the bowling alley, I'm going to take them on Saturday night. They tried to put an event on for kids, what they call Rock and Glow Bowling. And it goes till 12:30 at night. And there's a lot of minors that are doing that. And they hire extra security that walk around looking and watching because they have, I don't know if you're going to call it older boyfriends that are of age of 21, they're trying to share with the kids. And they've had to kick out a lot of people. We have, and I don't know if it still goes on, I haven't heard if it does, but Wednesday night they have a, a dance night at one of the local bars that I don't ever want a minor in there when they do serve alcohol in there because that area is so large, there's no way you could police that. But if they've got a, a good group in there, the, the minors would love to be in there dancing with, with all the adults and everything, with all the alcohol around. And that would be a huge problem when you have that large of establishment. So I, I hope that they say no, that we're not going to let, ever let minors in there on a non-team dance night. So, but I don't want to give them the option.
Counselor Flickus?
Mayor, we're discussing the same thing we discussed in the work session. We're going to discuss it again when it comes forward as an amendment, which I assume it will. I would suggest we hold these debates and conversations until someone puts an amendment on the floor and we can vote it up or down rather than revisiting it three times.
Thank you. Any other comments from anybody before we move on? Please.
Well, in light of that, we have a public hearing coming up as well. I would like to hear from the public, the owners, what kind of experience they've had with this. And, you know, just cover the whole gamut before we make a final decision.
I think that's a wise decision. All right. Anything else beyond the minors, City Clerk?
Yes, there is one other, one other thing that was not mentioned in your cover letter. On page six, you've got 5.09.160. It's under your consideration date. And we added this language based on some conversations and some wishes to give a little bit more teeth when it comes to renewal time. And if this last line would allow counsel to deny a renewal of a license if the establishment owed the city of Laramie a sum of money. Or, so it just gives you the authority if the situation arises where you deem it necessary to, to pull that card and be able to not renew a license because you're having trouble collecting fees from somebody, this does just allow you that authority. So it certainly doesn't require it, but it does allow you that. So I think that's the last thing that I wanted to point out. You know, as the attorney said, these are simply suggestions that we came forth with. A lot of these came straight from the liquor division. And like the minors in dispensing rooms, that came straight from the liquor division. We just popped it right in there. You can certainly make any changes that you would like to make on there. You know, it is completely your decision. And we just look for some direction as we're going into second reading as far as any changes that you would like to see.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. At section 5.09350, malt beverage permits for special events. And I'm perturbed by taking out the sentence there, "Any member of the city council or to any county commissioner, any state, county, or city law enforcement officer." We've had, we've gone through this before. And I think it becomes a conflict of interest because we are voting on these things. I, I don't think if you, if you are, then you ought to not hold a liquor license, quite frankly, or, or get a special permit or anything like that. So I, I don't know, is this in state statute that it was taken out? I don't like it because I remember the circus that we went through at the time. And it became an issue of the person then saying, "No, I'm not holding it. Somebody else is holding it, the corporation, but I'm part of the corporation, da-di-da-di-da." It becomes a conflict of interest because you're voting on this thing. So I, I would like to keep it in there, quite frankly. Do one thing or the other. You know, if you're an elected official that has a voting capacity on these matters, you ought not to hold one of those or get one of those permits, licenses, whatever.
Counselor Hanson, unfortunately, that was a change that was made in state statute by the legislature this year. I would defer to the city attorney on whether we can be more restrictive on that, but the state legislature took out all restrictions for any elected officials to have any type of licenses.
I know they did, but I think we can always be more restrictive.
I would pose that question to the city attorney.
Mayor, once again, I'm in the uncomfortable position. I'm not having thought this through entirely. But this is a different, I'll, I'll say this. I mean, it's a different thing when the state legislature says these folks are entitled to be considered, when they apply for liquor license. And we're saying, "We will not consider this class of people." I think that's different, Counselor Hanson, than being slightly more restrictive. It's denying them, a, a, a right is a strong word, but it's denying them even the opportunity that they have under the state...
Under state.
Under the state statute. So I would be extremely hesitant, but I've not researched the issue.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Counselor Schuster, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, I realize he has this comment. I've never had a liquor license or been involved with one or anything like that. But are you going to go everywhere with that? Should you be allowed to vote on a university item if they come in with something from us? You probably have a pension through there. Should you have to dismiss yourself every time?
No, I don't. I have a pension through the state.
Let's make sure we're not going back and forth. The rest of your comments, if you're...
I just think it's wild that we're going to say, "You're not allowed to be able to have this."
Any other questions, City Clerk, on any of these pieces of, of change? And a reminder to city council, again, the complete ordinance with all the changes because there are sections that are coming out that are just going to say, "See, state statute is available on the council intranet for, for your viewing." So make sure if you review it and have any questions, that you get those to the city clerk. So if there's no questions, then before we go to public comment, I'm going to let everybody take a break because it is 8:10. So we will come back in about 10 minutes. Up if you'd introduce your name, give your name for the record. And then there is also a sign-in sheet on the table behind the city clerk. If you could sign that after you're done, as, as you leave, that would be great. So what would you hear in the black jacket first?
Is this just about the liquor situation?
This is just about liquor.
Okay, I'm not...
You're good?
Good evening, my name's Tim Hale. This is an interesting subject. And it's, it's probably not a real popular subject that I'm going to address. But first, I'd like to comment on the comment that Mr. Hanson was stating about the conflicts of interest. And clearly, you know, you could put any sort of conflict under the microscope and determine how it applies. But need I remind you that behind this council on the wall, it says about building our community through respect. And when you're on the council and you have an unfair advantage to the rest of the population in town, when you have the ability to essentially put money in your pocket via a liquor license, whether you are a 51% owner or regardless, there's a monetary gain. And I recall a work session concerning conflicts of interest. And it was essentially stated that if a member of the council has an opportunity to do something that's advantageous to them that the rest of the community does not have, then that clearly becomes a conflict. And even if it's the appearance of a conflict, that's considered a conflict. And so what we've had is this, "Well, I'm not going to vote on it." And I believe we had a former mayor that then stepped down, recused himself, stepped down, walked out in the hallway, and then came up back to the podium. And now he's speaking as a private citizen. And, you know, the semantics there were terrible. And if that's going to be allowed, I think we ought to take down, paint over the building our community through respect because I don't think you get the respect of the public when you have that ability and regardless of what the legislature has deemed or not. The second thing I'd like to bring up regarding the liquor, and perhaps this council has a short memory. Didn't we have a bunch of college students that got splattered out on 287 from a drunk driver? And, and now we're kind of, we're promoting alcohol. We're, we're trying to be more lenient. We're allowing minors in areas that, and let's, let's talk about minors. They're very impressionable, they're not mature. And they're going to be subject, sublimity or not, to alcohol. And I think it starts on a road to where we don't want to go. And what I've noticed here tonight is there wasn't a single person up here on the council that bothered to ask our assistant police chief, "In, in terms of crime, how much of a component is alcohol?" Has anybody ever picked up the newspaper and read the municipal court findings in there that alcohol wasn't a problem? I don't think you could, you could pick up the paper that it seems to be a prevalent problem. And rather than controlling this and trying to discourage it, this is what our rec center was supposed to be for the kids. Now, we're not concerned about the rec center. We're going to try to funnel the kids into bars up to 8:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the evening, whatever it may be. I think there ought to be something a little more constructive and a little more productive for kids than having them participate in any way, shape, or form in a area that serves alcohol. But instead, what I'm hearing is what this council, what the city can get in terms of monetary benefit of permits and everything else. And I think you've lost sight of what the real issue is. And I would hope to think that the city could derive its money from something else other than alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hale, could you sign this sheet for the city clerk? Please, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Monica Keel and I work in alcohol abuse and substance abuse, alcohol abuse and substance abuse prevention, predominantly with the college students. Obviously, we're a college town here. And I just wanted to speak on a little bit about the data behind it, the research that we see when it comes to alcohol involvement and some more salient data that is for Laramie itself and Albany County. This is data from Johnson and Associates arrest data. And it shows that out of all our total arrests from last year, about 56% of them were alcohol involved. And out of those 56%, 27% of the point of location of consumption were from bars. So I believe as far as alcohol availability, I think we should probably stick with what is in, currently in the ordinance as it's read because I think the research shows the longer hours of availability shows that these increases of consequences like arrests, assaults, DUIs, and so on, there's an increase in them the longer that we have that alcohol available for people. So that's kind of what I wanted to say, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Please come forward.
Hello, council and mayor. My name's Tess Kilmeade, I'm actually a student at UW. So I'm here, you know, to kind of express my personal side of it, but I also work with survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence in our community. In 2016, 50% of all sexual assault and domestic violence-related incidents involved alcohol, especially for students. Students are most likely to be assaulted away from the home and typically bars are a high-risk location. And that's that age of about 18 to 24. So this includes our population, 18 to 21, that we're kind of considering maybe allowing into these establishments. What we know is when students and young people go into bars early, the longer that they spend drinking, the more consequences they're going to see. And often, our students are going in maybe before that 8:00 P.M. hour, before IDs are getting checked. And then they're staying in after 8:00. So we know that our students are staying in when IDs are being checked and they haven't been checked. And that's where underage consumption is typically occurring. So I just wanted to share some of that information with the council and the mayor and hope that we consider the impact that some of these changes might have. What we have in place right now, we're already seeing pretty high-risk behavior and high-risk consequences among our students. So I think to get even more liberal with it and to, you know, make some more changes, we're just asking for some more consequences among our students. So I think I like it how it's read. And I think they've done a really good job of putting it together so far.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Sean Blackburn. I want to thank the council and the staff for the current ordinance you have in front of you. I urge the city council to adopt the ordinance as it is written. I am particularly concerned as a citizen here in Laramie about minors in establishments that primarily make their money off of alcohol sales. I think 8:00 P.M. is a very reasonable hour for that to stop. I'm very, very concerned about citizens in Laramie being able to partake in drinking in establishments after 2:00 or 2:30 in the morning. So I urge city council to adopt this ordinance as written, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, anybody else going once?
Lady in the corner?
I think she changed her mind.
Oh, she changed her mind.
All right, so a closed public comment on this. Comments from council. So we have several things that we've gone through. This is first reading on this. We certainly can discuss amendments or we could have amendments come back if they need to be more technical at second reading, working with the city attorney. So I will open it up for discussion here. Counselor Schumey?
I just want to make a short comment. And that is that everyone that came before us from the public stressed how important it is for us to make sure that we, that we are considerate of those under 21 because, you know, the reason that there's a 21 age limit for drinking is because decision-making, which has been brought up, is different prior to the, you know, the age of 21. I think it's very important for us to make sure that we do everything we can to protect the community, protect these young men and young women, and make sure that, that we make decisions to where the decisions that we make on alcohol permits are for the better, betterment of the community. And also to protect the young men and young women that are not at the age where they should be in that environment.
Counselor Schuster?
If I would make any ordinance change, I would leave basically 99% alone and, alone. And I would get rid of that 8:00 P.M. That we keep it just exactly how it is now. get rid of that 8:00 p.m., that we keep it just exactly how it is now. If you're a drinking establishment, you're not in there. That would be my only statement, because we just, I worry about that 10%, that if we're making it easier for them, you know, the 90% that behave themselves that are minors is great, but we've got to worry about that 10%, because those are the ones we're trying to keep out of the system. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Counselor Polikas.
You know, really, what our Counselor Schuster said is very close to what I think also. I'm very interested in hearing from the public, but overall, I think the way the ordinance is presented is reasonable. I could, I could be persuaded slightly either way, but I'm not interested in big-time changes in any way. That's the way I feel now, anyway, about it.
Counselor Hensley.
Thank you, Honored. In addition to what Counselor Shumway brought up, years ago, we had a presentation at the National League of Cities that the influence of alcohol under the age of 21 on the brain development is apparently a factor of impact, and that there is a certain danger involved. This came from the medical community, and it was something that was quite interesting to, to hear at the time. I'm usually very liberal on alcohol laws because of where I was born and came from, but that was something that really had an impact on me as far as the presentation was concerned, making the point that there is, for, for young brains, there is an impact that is due to the consumption of alcohol at an early age. Thank you.
Anybody else for the first time? Vice Mayor.
So I don't disagree with any of the findings. I think, I think they're valid. I think the research is, is probably very spot-on. But I also need to support the owners of these establishments and what their preference is. And I, and I think I would like to, to hear from some of those establishments. So if, obviously, I don't believe we have any of them in the room this evening, but it would be great if we got some of their thoughts on this matter. And my views may be considered somewhat liberal, and I'm fine with that, but, but I think these establishments should be giving the opportunity to make and establish their own rules, and I am not going to mandate, or at least vote in favor of, would I see us moving towards a moral issue? Because I, I don't think that's, I don't believe that to be my place, and I think, you know, y'all can make that decision if you want, but I'm not.
Anyone else for the first time? I will make a comment here, and that is I have some considerable concern about item under 5.09.615A2, which deals with the under-21s remaining in the bars until 8:00 p.m. My concerns are not whether that could be, or whether that could be okay. I think under the right supervision, maybe eight's too late in my mind, but I have young kids, so I might be the other side of the spectrum. But what I do consider to be a problem is enforcement. How in the world, I would love to hear from the establishments on how in the world they're going to comb the under-21s out of their establishment at 8:00 p.m. And to be very honest, the points that an establishment would accumulate, if we went in and did compliance checks from LPD to go assess how many minors were in a particular establishment or whatever, it would take quite a few citations, although we've made great improvements in our point system. I mean, the, once you get basically three citations for that, you would get potentially a one-day or, I think, a three-day suspension on their license. I mean, it really is not, it takes a while to get to that substantial penalty where you would actually put your license in jeopardy. And I also have concerns about enforcement on the LPD side because of the resources we have here at the city. How in the world, with the limited enforcement that we have right now, with the host of other things that people want enforced, are we going to find more police presence to go and make sure that we don't have a high increase in crime for underage people that are in establishments? And for me, I also might draw a line between an 18-year-old that's in college that might be in that establishment, and a 16-year-old high school student, or a 17-year-old high school student. And right now, this ordinance makes no, makes no difference between a 16-year-old being in that bar until 8:00 p.m. or a 19-year-old high school, or college student being in that bar until 8:00 p.m. To me, those are two completely decision, different decision-making ages ranges, I'm sure there's a scientific term for it that I'm missing, but I think we need to take that into account. So what I would like to see is more information from all sides, and I want to hear from the businesses on how in the world they think they're going to be able to control minors in their bars till eight, till seven, till any time? Because I'm not sure that it makes a big difference on the time, but I suppose I could be persuaded either way. So anyways, I assume some very serious concerns about that. I have some concerns that I think I might need to check with the city attorney on definitions of a commercial kitchen and how those could be pushed around significantly, because I think that's pretty loosely defined in state statute. City Attorney?
Mayor, the clerk and I have identified that issue.
Okay.
We need to work on that definition. We'll probably use a version of the definition that we use for restaurant licenses, what we use to define a restaurant, but you're absolutely correct to highlight that issue.
Okay. So I'll wrap my comments up there, and I'll see if I can come up with something to bring back potentially for consideration after a public hearing and second reading. Any other comments from council?
No.
All right. So I think that we can, everybody comfortable going to a vote here on first reading? All right. City Clerk, would you roll call on this, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney, absent Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries, and that will move to second reading in a public hearing. I do want to make a note for council, it was brought up to me during the break, that if this gets a lot of attention, or we seem to have a lot of public interest, it may, we may need to move the public hearing at the very least to a separate date and make a special meeting for it. I know that would be challenging with our schedule, considering the budget meetings, but I think that if we have a lot of public interest, this could certainly take up a lot of time. So if anybody has any issues with that, please let me know after the meeting. All right. So we'll move on to item 13A, which will be Counselor Henry.
Yes. I move to approve Resolution Number 2017-32, modifying the number of committee members on the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee from five to seven, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Schuster. Assistant City Manager, Derrigan.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this resolution comes before you on recommendation of the Monolith Ranch Committee to add as a permanent membership someone from the Laramie Rivers Conservation District and Wyoming Game and Fish. The resolution is written with the intent that those entities would, or would appoint the person rather than council doing interviews, so it would just be a standing seat on the committee. With the intent that someone would be participating regularly in the meetings, I had drafted the resolution in a way that they would be voting members of the committee as well. And I, I really don't have a lot of more to say on that. It did come as a result of several months of discussion, and through Vice Mayor Pierce and Counselor Henry as liaisons to that board, and I would defer to both of them for perhaps more the background or the philosophy behind that change.
Counselor Henry, or, you're the current liaison, right?
Sure.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just want to point out that when, when we get, when we get applications for people to fill the vacancies in that committee, we get a lot of applications. And when you have, and I think it's important for the Laramie Rivers Conservation District and the Wyoming Game and Fish to have, say, in the long-term plan of the Monolith Ranch, in the short-term plan, whatever, because they are, the Wyoming Game and Fish has a hunter-management area on the Monolith Ranch, and we renew their agreement every year. So it, you know, you're, I just think it's important, and they've both expressed interest in remaining on the committee. The Laramie Rivers Conservation District, they have a wealth of knowledge of grants and funding opportunities for water projects and wildlife projects, as well as ranching projects. So it helps the committee members to know of all these available resources, and those are brought forward with, from the Laramie Rivers Conservation District. They also have, the LRCD also has knowledge of soils and, you know, waterways and the, I don't know, just range management. I mean, they're, they're very helpful. It's very helpful to have these two committee members on our committee. So if anybody has any questions, I could be happy to answer.
Questions first, Justice City Manager, Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one quick question. How are the other seven members elected?
It's a five-member committee, and you appoint them, oh, excuse me, Honorable Mayor and Counselor Hanson. It's a five-member committee that you interview and appoint, just like any other committee. Counselor Henry is the council liaison and a voting member of the board.
And they are citizens at large, those five members? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, and there would be two members that belong to specific organizations, and five members are citizens at large.
Well, four citizens at large and one counselor.
One counselor.
Through the mayor.
That counselor has a vote, too. Okay, thank you.
I shall also point out that a few years ago, we removed two staff members as voting members, which we didn't think was appropriate.
I remember that.
Counselor Henry, did you have anything to add?
Yes, I also wanted to say that with the, the amount of work that's going on with the ranch right now, it's also hard, it's difficult for five people to do all that work. It's, it's, and if you have anyone who is absent at a meeting, it's just better having seven. I mean, we've tried it now for several years with five, and it's often difficult. So that's another reason we wanted a couple more members, but specifically from these two entities.
Vice Mayor?
So I think the whole intent early on was to basically increase the level of expertise on the committee, as well as, with that expertise, it was resources regarding plans going forward with the ranch. And I think that was most of the, the reason that, that we, we opted, or we were thinking about this, and this has been a long time coming. It was when, basically, when I, so we're looking at at least two and a half years, I would, I would think, or at least one and a half for sure, maybe a little bit more, roughly. And this is not, yeah, and this is not, don't worry, I mean, this is not a surprise to the committee. I mean, they're fully, fully aware, fully adding these members because of their level of expertise and, and projects that, that we foresee happening down the road.
Counselor Polikas.
Well, I have one quick
Please.
question or confusion. The resolution, the motion on the floor says nothing about either the Game and Fish or the Conservation District.
Oh, in the resolution, the resolution itself says it.
Your motion on the floor does not address that at all.
The motion on the floor is to adopt a resolution that does that.
Was it to adopt the resolution?
Yep.
Okay. I got you. All right.
I think we're good.
All right. Let me, this is why, this is my concern, and this is my only concern, is, and I understand what you're saying, and actually, the Conservation District, in some ways, as you presented it, makes sense to me. As far as the expertise going forward, I don't know where we're going forward with the ranch and the concept of the ranch and what the ranch is going to be. That's why we're going to actually end up creating a, a plan and hiring a consultant or whatever it takes to figure out what the long-range plan of that ranch is. Right now, the long-range plan of that ranch is to provide a water source and maintain that water source for the city of Laramie. And we do that through a lease agreement with a rancher to create the use of water on that ranch, period. That's it. Now, in the future, that very well may change, or it may not change. I really don't know, because it's never been addressed. So my only concern is, is we're putting, and I, and I think the Game and Fish is part of it, because they do allow permits for, for hunting licenses on it, but I'm not sure that rises to the level of a, of a vote on all the matters within the ranch. I can see why it's important for them on that issue, and I can see why it's important them to be engaged in conversation with the ranch committee. I just can't put the dots together, connecting them into [inaudible]. We've all had that problem, there's finding the mute button on that.
Sounds like a boxing match.
Five to two Tigers.
Counselor Henry and I both know where the mute button is. Anyway, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure, in my mind, I'm trying to justify that being a voting member. Now, frankly, with the conversation you just had concerning the Conservation District and the availability of grants and so forth and so forth, that sounds like they would be a valuable member. But Counselor Schuster brought something up, and I think it's valid. How many representatives do we have with a lot of ranching experience on that committee right now, or have ever had on that committee? I posed that question.
Well, I think
Counselor Henry?
Okay, so we have like an economic, somebody who's agri, an agriculture economist or something like that.
You're talking a rancher.
A rancher. Well, we have the lessee. I mean, we also, at each meeting, sometimes at the meetings, the lessee or the lessee representative comes and talks to us and gives us a report on what's going on and what he wants to see and et cetera. We also have Darren Parkin, who's the Water Resource Engineer, who's very knowledgeable about water and ranching, and he tells us things. We also have city staff who advise us about ranching operations. So it, it's an advisory committee. And the Wyoming Game and Fish also, they, they have, you know, they have that area on the Pioneer pasture where they've built a restroom. And that's, so they have a, they have kind of a, they have skin in the game. They've built a nice area for people to come and go fishing, and you can park and, and all this, and you can walk along the river, there's a public area there, and they maintain that. So that's another reason, I think, to have Wyoming Game and Fish.
So what, what I would like to see, it makes sense to have seven members. I don't think we need to be specific as to whether we want a member from the Game and Fish. I think in some ways, having the capacity to bring on someone with more expertise on ranching, not peripheral education expertise, but more expertise on ranching, because there's two things that happen on that ranch, and the most important thing that happens on that ranch is the protection of our water rights. Okay? And that encompasses the use of that ranch by our lessee. And I understand Mr. Barr, the lessee, provides input, but I'd like some outside input, if you will, when it comes time to, to be able to consider whether he's doing a justifiable job. So I could support this if it wasn't specific to those two positions, but I would rather have it opened up to a more broader spectrum of, of opportunities.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to go back and forth, and I've got several other council members that want to make comments. Can I go to them first, please? Counselor Shumway.
Well, my comments are in agreement with what Counselor Polikas said. I, first of all, I, I don't want, I want to have all seven members. I'm not opposed to seven, seven's fine, but I want to have them all appointed by the, by the council through applications. Now, to me, it may make sense right now to include the Laramie Rivers Conserv- Now, to me, it may make sense right now to include the Laramie Rivers Conservation Group and the Game and Fish as, you know, the ones that we want to have on that, but that's the decision of the council. However, I think it also would be wise for the council to find somebody that is a specialist in water, maybe a water attorney or something like that. We may want to include, um, Mountain Cement. They have a, a great interest now that they have operation going on there. We may want to include the surrounding, uh, the adjoining ranchers or the adjoining properties around that. We, the list could go on and on, the people that have interest in that. But I think that is determined by the, those that are, that, you know, that, uh, apply to be on the, uh, commission, and then we go through the interview process and say, what is the best group that we can work with right now for the purpose that we have of the Monolith Ran- of the Monolith Ranch? I don't, I just don't want to get to the point where we have a privileged group that steers everyone else and has, you know, a guaranteed seat at the table, when we should be the ones determining how we want to use this very valuable asset that the city has and determine, you know, application by application, who is going to be the person sitting at the table making decisions for this valuable piece of property for the city, rather than having us privileged, uh, one or two individuals that know that they have a seat at that table guaranteed. I'm opposed to that. And so, I'm going to vote no for this, uh, this is its amend- or this
Resolution.
...resolution that's before us, this move from consent to the regular agenda. I'm going to vote no right now.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Honor. Uh, I agree with what the last two speakers have said. If we look at our advisory, citizens' advisory committees, we have specialists coming in. I serve on the Traffic Commission. Those are citizens, and then, of course, the traffic engineer, as a specialist, comes in and speaks to the committee. But that traffic engineer is not a member of the committee. To my knowledge, we only have one committee where we specify there has to be a doctor, a dentist, or whatever on it. Which committee is that?
Health Board.
Board of Health.
Board of, the Board of Health, you know, where we specify what these professionals have to be, to be on this committee. Uh, everything else is open, and we have the specialists come in to speak to the committee. Uh, so I have really also no objection to having seven members, if that functions better. Uh, but it's probably a little dicey to say we have two organizations that have voting representation on this committee. If it's a citizens' advisory committee to the council, construct, supposed to be constructed like all the other committees, except this Board of Health that specifies who has to be on it. Um, I have not seen it anywhere else. And to repeat my beginning statement, the traffic engineer is not a voting member of the Traffic Commission. Uh, they come in here and do their presentation, and then the commission, uh, makes a decision and brings it forward to the council. So, I see there's sort of going a deviation from the committee structure that we normally, for our advisory committees, adhere to. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, just, uh, one more time around. Um, you know, we're talking about a chunk of ground that is roughly the same size as the city of Laramie. Uh, there is a level of expertise, in my opinion, is needed on, on this particular committee. So, that was the, I'm guessing, I don't, I haven't been to a committee meeting since we changed, uh, commit- committees, but that was certainly the reason and the intent, um, early on. And, uh, Counselor Polikas is, is correct that at its current time, the goal of, of that group in a, and of our Monolith Ranch is water. No doubt about that. But at some point, and I'm thinking sooner rather than later, it would be wise for us to, and have that committee really work in partnership or work on providing a plan for that relatively huge chunk of ground, um, going forward. So, hence the level of, um, expertise that we are asking for, um, specifically to the fishing game issue as Counselor. Henry has noted during the hunting season and not, um, they spend a fair amount of time on there checking licenses, making sure that, that folks are not, you know, doing anything illegal that, uh, that could occur on, on that amount of, of open ground. And, uh, we really appreciate, uh, the efforts that those enforcement officers at, at Fishing Game supply to us. So, I think we need to keep that, keep that in mind as well, because they are out there taking care of our interests, not only during the hunting season and checking licenses and et cetera, et cetera, but making sure that other activities related to game or not are not occurring on that, on that ranch.
Anybody else for their first time? You haven't spoken yet, right? Counselor Schuster?
The whole thing, forgetting the ranch, was forgetting the water rights. It wasn't to rent a ranch. I have a problem with the ranch, and it came up several years ago, that it's, it's never, ever, and I'm going to use the straight word, never showing a profit. Everybody writes out a water bill every single month. A percentage of that water bill has gone to maintain the ranch, because it is for water rights. We got a lot of the items taken care of. The amount that we were losing a year changed dramatically. I do see the Laramie, uh, River, Laramie River Conservatives, that one's great. Game and Fish, I'm just a little bit, if you're on. Uh, I, I understand the hunting rights. I'm really curious how, if somebody wants to get a hunting profit for their, do they go into a lottery draw? I mean, there's a huge amount of people that love to hunt on that ranch. And, and how is that person selected? Um, the other thing is, when we do decide to exercise our water rights, everybody here on council knows, we don't get all of it. We get a certain percentage. A certain percentage has to stay on that ranch and has to stay so it can maintain a working ranch. Now, are we going to take what the pivots use? That's probably a good statement there. We probably won't be able to touch anything that is for grazing rights and stuff like that. So, what we have there is, there's a great big, huge question, and I really would like to say, when you had said that we have experts that appear, how many times have we had a neighboring ranch manager appear at one of these so that he could give an opinion on a ranch that is working, working correctly and showing a profit? I don't want to sound like we're not doing a good job, but we lose over a hundred thousand dollars a year that we can play rancher out there. So, I, I, I have a little issue with that. We've lost up to over four hundred thousand dollars a year before we got things in guideline.
So, before I go to anybody for their second time, I want to make a quick comment, because I think that we're, we're kind of diverging from the discussion. Talking about issues we have about management of the Monolith Ranch is separate from the committee makeup in, in my mind. I, I can see some discussion there, but I want to get us back on focus.
Okay.
The other thing that I want to let council know is, if you pull up our council goals that were adopted, one of the goals, it's, uh, item U, initiate a long-term Monolith Ranch Land Use Plan parentheses, Recreation and Water. We adopted that. We've given marching instructions for that through our goal, so we need to keep that in mind. Another council goal is also to develop, um, our community, our, strengthen community agency partnerships and work on joint projects. I can't, every, you know, we were kind of talking about the Game and Fish as though they're this outside entity. They're not. They're very much in this community. They're very much a part of this community. Those employees are part of this community. And right now, they are doing the hunters' management on that ranch. I don't want that responsibility. I would really like to keep Game and Fish involved in the discussion so that they can do all of that. So, I think that we need to be cognizant of that and not treat our partner agencies like pariahs that, that don't have a stake in the game. They absolutely have a stake in the game. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, same thing. And to be honest, the committees that I've seen work the best in the city and in the county are the ones that have a diverse group that are, that come from different backgrounds, can bring different agency resources to the table. And I think all of those things are really, really important for the Monolith Ranch. We had a very serious discussion about this. We had a visit from the water attorney about eighteen months ago, I think, two years ago, something like that, as well as, we had a very serious discussion about this when the land was sold to Mountain Cement. And I don't remember if we actually did it, but we discussed seriously restricting that sale money for a portion of it to go to the Monolith Ranch Land Use Plan for Recreation and Water. So, we've had these discussions. We've put it in our council goals. In my opinion, I don't see anything wrong with putting, uh, setting a spot for the Game and Fish and the Laramie Rivers Conservation District, because I see them as absolute partner agencies and critical to the ranch operation. I understand that there might be concerns, but in any ways, I, I would like them at the table. And I think that they have a serious enough stake in the game that they should be voting. The other, the last point I will make is, this is an advisory body. They can advise, and the council can decline if we so wish. I would like their professional opinions on the aspects of the ranch. Game and Fish has an active role on that ranch right now for hunter management and other things. I want their professional opinion on what's going on in that regards on that ranch. That's why I would like them to be part of the advisory committee, and I, and I support that. I also agree that the workload is going to increase. And if we don't put these two extra members on the committee, I think the council still needs to have a serious discussion about how we're going to give that committee more resources to do what the council has already issued in our marching orders and our city council goals. So, I will leave it at that and ask everybody to consider those things. Second time around, Counselor Hanson.
Your Honor, I would suggest, from what we have heard, that we split the last part of the, of the document, here, the motion into two parts, namely, the seven membership and the voting as regular members of those two entities, uh, because I've heard conflicting things. I think there seems to be agreement that seven members is no problem for this council. Uh, the other one is a problem for several of us, uh, because I think there's room for ex officio membership, uh, without a vote on any committee, and we do have that. We are, as a matter of fact, the counselors, usually ex officio members on several council, on several, uh, committees. Uh, so, uh, I make the official suggestion to split that into two motions, um, namely, the first one to say to modify it to seven members, and a second one, whether you want to vote on these two members to be assigned from, uh, Laramie Rivers Conservation District and the Wyoming Game and Fish Committee.
Counselor Hanson, I do believe that that would have to be an amendment to the actual resolution.
Correct.
So.
I suggest such an amendment.
If you want to put one on the floor, you are certainly free to do that.
I have just done so. I just, I'm waiting for a second.
Okay.
So, I'm not clear what the motion is.
What's the amendment?
I'm, I'm not clear what the motion is.
The motion is to split the, now, therefore, uh, motion in the resolution into the first one. The Monolith Ranch Committee will be modified to a seven-member committee. That's motion number one. And then there would be a motion number two. That seven-member committee will include voting members assigned from the Laramie Rivers Conservation District and the Wyoming Game and Fish Commission.
Uh, city attorney. I'm still not tracking that motion, because I don't think it modifies the resolution. City attorney?
Mayor, if I may, Counselor Hanson, it might be easier to make an amendment that stops the resolution after the word committee.
Correct.
If that amendment passes, then you all could vote on the seven-member committee idea. If that amendment doesn't pass, then you would vote on the seven-member committee with these two specific members.
Thank you for that brilliant suggestion. I will follow it. Thank you.
Can the vice mayor make a quick comment before you put that amendment on the floor, or would you, you want to go ahead and do that?
Well, yeah, I hear comment first.
Sir, so, not that I'm opposed, but I am just wondering if it would be wise to postpone at this time before we go forward and possibly bring the members of the Monolith Ranch Committee here to explain in different, greater, more detailed reasonings instead of, um, the few of us here. Would you be interested in hearing from the committee itself before we move forward with splitting, with splitting things up? It's just a thought.
Counselor Schuster, on that point?
I think, no, I think we're just talking about the amendment, which I felt she did, because it's been brought to the floor and it's been seconded.
It's not been seconded. We don't have, we don't have an amendment on the floor right now.
Well, he's, he waited for her comments before he made the motion.
Right, right. Right, that's why.
It's not on the floor yet.
So.
So, do you have anybody that wants to put an amendment on the floor? I will go back to Counselor Hanson first.
Okay, I'll make the, uh, a motion to amend the now, therefore, section, uh, to stop after the word, uh, member committee, uh, so that the, therefore, would read, the Monolith Ranch Committee will be modified to a seven-member committee. And I think we have heard comment on that respect. Five was not enough to work that committee.
Do I have seconds?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have an amendment on the floor, seconded by Counselor Shumway. Or, I have a question for the city attorney, in that if I'm reading the resolution correctly, that would still not eliminate the Laramie Rivers Conservation District, because there is language above that in the last whereas clause that would also need to be modified. Is that correct?
Mayor, uh, I'm not sure about that.
I just want to clarify the amendment to make sure we're getting at the point.
The substantive, I, I'm thinking this through out loud. The substantive, um, resolution is that you say whatever you want in the whereas, but your substantive resolution is that the committee will be modified to a seven-member committee.
Okay.
So, that's what we're voting on.
Okay.
That's what you're voting on.
All right, comments specific to the amendment of eliminating them specifically from being the two additional members. Counselor Schuster?
I would support the original amendment, but, or support the original item, but I will not support the amendment, because I, I, I think we're just grasping at straws.
Other comments specifically to the amendment? All right, I will make one more comment, in that I don't think, I don't like the message that descends to the LRCD and Game and Fish that we do not value them as specific members to the committee. And I think if the council wants to consider something else where they're appointed ex officio or something like that, I might be able to work with that, but I don't want to send the message that their input is not needed. Any other comments on the amendment? Counselor Shumway?
I want to make sure that we're voting on changing the committee from five to seven and nothing else. Are we going beyond that?
No, we need, right now, we have an amendment on the floor that would change it. There, where the two additional members would not automatically be assigned to the LCRD and the Game and Fish.
With, with the opportunity to come back to, before we vote on the
And then we'll go, we have to vote on the amendment to eliminate them as the two members. And then we'll have a motion, or we'll have a resolution that will change the committee from five to seven if that amendment is successful. All right, any other comments before we vote on the amendment?
I think Joe is
I'm, I'm confused there.
He's confused now, because I think, I thought we were just voting from five to seven.
To seven, that's what I thought.
No.
No, no, that is incorrect. We, right now, we have an amendment on the floor. City attorney?
Mayor, I, and Counselor Shumway, I believe that first, you, what's on the floor right now is amend this, amend this to say it will be modified to a seven-member committee, period. And then if you, if you pass this amendment, then you would have to vote to pass that resolution as amended, which will stop at the word committee.
So, if we pass this amendment, then those two extra committee spots don't go to LCRD or Game and Fish. Then we just go back to vote whether we want to
Do them.
Do it to a seven-member committee. Does that make sense?
Correct.
So, the amendment is, do you want two spots to go to two specific organizations or not? Counselor Polikas?
I think what might simplify the amendment, if we were to add to the amendment, that we also, uh, we also ask the Game and Fish and the Conservation District to be ex officio members in addition to those seven members. I don't know if the amendment, maybe would agree to that.
I would be agreeable to that, yes.
Uh, city attorney? City Attorney, we can clarify if we can modify it.
Well, I'm asking for the, I'm asking for the amendment maker to modify his amendment.
Mayor.
City Attorney, please.
Absolutely, as, as has been noted, you can amend an amendment.
Right.
But second of all, ex officio, in my opinion, would be the wrong term. Ex officio would put those people on the committee. Ex officio just means that by reason of their position, they're on the committee with, with full voting privileges.
Non-voting members.
Uh, no, ex officio means that you're a full voting member of committee. So if you call them ex officio members, they'd be voting members.
Okay. Councilor Polikas, do you still wish...
I, I've got it wrong, so I withdraw my suggestion.
Withdraw your request.
At this point in time.
All right, we are back to Councilor Hanson's original amendment. Councilor Shumway?
Okay, I, I still am not really clear on what I'm going to vote for here in just a second. I do not believe that it would ever be in the interest of the Laramie Conservation District or the Fish, Game and Fish to not attend this meeting. They will be there because it's in their best interest to attend and to be advisory, and they will be listened to. I do not want to vote for them to be permanent members of the, of the Ranch Advisory Council Commission. I want to vote to expand it to seven, but I don't want to vote anyone that's automatically privileged to sit on this group without the long, you know, without the council changing the definite, or the, the makeup of this group as we go along. So I want to, I want to make sure when I vote yes or I vote no, that I'm just voting on seven members of this committee.
City Attorney?
Mayor and Councilor Shumway, that's exactly what you would be doing. It's just a two-step process. The first is the amendment to get those, those two organizations out of this resolution. And then your second vote would be just the language to expand, expand it to seven members if this first amendment passes.
Vote clear.
Councilor Schuster?
I'm going to vote no on the amendment because I do want them to be voting members and put on there. So I'll vote no, but I am in support of the overall amendment. Just, just so it's clear why I'm going to vote no.
Any other comments from council on this? Any comments from the public on the amendment? All right, City Clerk, roll call on the amendment, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
McKinney, gone, or, excuse me, Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Pierce?
No.
Somerville?
No.
That is four yeses and four nos, your honor.
That amendment fails. We are back to the original resolution. Any other, any further comments on it? Vice Mayor?
A move that we postponed in the hopes of hearing from the Ranch Committee itself.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Do you have that to a date, certain?
I need a date, certain.
You need a date.
Do you want to...
Two weeks from today?
May sixteenth.
Sure. Do we have a second for postponement to May sixteenth to hear from the Ranch Committee? All right, that dies for a lack of second. Councilor Henry?
I just want to make a comment that we are having a meeting this Thursday, and we have already begun work on a long-term plan. We are getting all our ideas together to, we're just kind of ascert, you know, just ascertaining what, what these ideas, what ideas we're going to come up with. So it's really important for this to be passed. We, we wanted it on this meeting so that we could have it passed, so that these people could help us with the, with the long-term plan. And we may end up hiring a consultant, but we don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on something. We just want to get a, you know, just an idea of what we want going forward, so.
Any further comments on this? Councilor Shumway?
Well, first of all, Game and Fish and the Laramie Rivers Conservation are not consultants, nor do they get paid. So it's not going to cost any money for them to come and advise this committee. And believe me, the committee has in their best interest to listen to them as they attend the meetings. They attend right now and they will continue to attend.
No, they don't.
They do not attend, then we can't force them to.
May I, Mayor?
Councilor Henry?
The, these two people have begun attending with the hopes that they will become members of the committee, voting members. Before that, they had dropped off coming because they're busy, they're very busy people. And they don't want to come to a two and a half hour meeting, especially when we're starting to have them more often now when we're talking about long-term plans. So I, I think that unless they are voting members, we cannot guarantee their presence or their expertise.
They should be there.
I think we've exhausted the topic. Any other last comments? All right, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Gabriel?
No.
Polikas?
No.
Shumway?
No.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is four yeses and four nos, your honor.
That motion fails. All right, on to item number fourteen, which is public comment on non-agenda items.
That's too bad.
Please come forward, yes, please. Thank you for being very patient with us this evening.
It was educational.
If you can...
That was educational.
Introduce yourself, there's a five-minute time limit, and then when you leave, if you can sign the paper behind the City Clerk, please.
You probably remember me, I was here last week. My name is Roy Bane, and I'm a member of the Laramie Rifle Range. And I brought up issues last week that I, I was really concerned about. And like I say, I said some damning statements that I wouldn't want to say about me, but if I couldn't confirm these statements, I wouldn't have said them. The one thing that I want to bring up to you tonight is that the statement after the meeting, Counselor Brian Schuster, the liaison to the rifle range, said, "The pay situation had more nuance than Bane explained." "Tom Matamore said he did not receive money from the rifle range, and he does not," Schuster said. "He's offered a check like anybody else, but he turns it down, and he does everything out of, out of free of cost because, I guess he's a great philanthropist and, and it's an honor to be in his presence." Well, I have documentation from the accountant over the last year and a half showing that he was issued a check and he cashed the check. Now, you might say, "This isn't a check and this is no proof." But let me tell you that under the accountant system of Laramie Rifle Range, it's a cash basis system. So no entry goes onto their forms without the fact that the check has been cashed. They don't make the entry unless you cash the check. So, so Mr. Schuster may have been given that statement, but I'm concerned that he would jump on his sword to that extent when, when I got documentation here that, that that was totally incorrect, the information he was given. Now, this brings up a bigger point that, I'm going to leave this with you because you might, guys might look at it, want to look at that. But the bigger point I have here is the whole liaison system with the Laramie Rifle Range. We've got a fiasco out there where, where they're spending more money than need to on a project, up to like almost fifteen thousand dollars. Now, you would expect that a liaison would advise you of what's going on out there. Back in December, I would expect the liaison, it didn't have a conflict of interest, to have informed you of what was going on there. But that didn't happen. And I'm sitting here, or standing here before you today because you were kept in the dark. And I think the current system of liaison, you have, you have a conflict of interest between what goes on here and what goes on there. And I think that conflict is to keep you people in the dark as much as possible so they have free rein on what they want to do. Now, like I said, that's something that you have to answer yourself and you might need to want to change, and I hope you do change it, and I hope that I can get something resolved on the issue that I brought up last week. The other point I'd like to make is that you're talking or seeing right here a bad member of Laramie Rifle Range. And the reason I'm a bad member is I'm not an apathetic member. We have over five hundred people in that rifle range that are members, and I think everyone but me is apathetic. And, and I'm a threat to them because I stand here in front of you. Now, to put it another way, and I like to put it this way, if you've ever gone antelope hunting and you sneak up on antelope and you're crawling through all the ravines, and then you peek your head up over the sagebrush, and forty antelope are there eating, but there's that one antelope staring right back at you. I'm the one antelope staring right back at you. And because I'm a threat, I have a funny feeling that, that I'm destined to have more legal troubles from the Laramie Rifle Range. And like I say, they don't do many things that are transparent, so I can't prove that today, but I've got rumors that, that I am in the crosshairs of the president and of the other board members to be removed from the rifle range. Now, whether that's true or not, you can ask Mr. Schuster about that. But like I say, I don't think the, the things that we see going on out there are acceptable for the way you as a city want to see your rifle range run. And I definitely hope that, that you don't shoot the one antelope with its head in the air. So anyway, that's all I have. And I, like I say, the, the statements made by Mr. Schuster undermine what I said, and the documentation here proves that I, I had the information correct. And like I say, I, I would hope that in the future you get more correct information from a liaison than I think you're getting at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hale, please come up.
I too am a member of the rifle range, life member. And years ago, when it's, the rifle range first originated, the board, pretty much everybody was volunteer basis. And there, there were some stumblings, but for the most part, we got a lot done. And it's not anything compared to how dysfunctional it is now. So what we have now is board members that decide they're going to pay themselves. That includes the liaison. And, you know, I question how many liaisons does the council have that vote in a separate entity and can vote to give themselves pay raises? And I noticed in the newspaper here, it goes on, it says, "After the meeting, Counselor Schuster said the pay situation was more of a nuisance." Well, one range member, board member, brought up two meetings ago that he made a motion to eliminate the pay. And just eliminate it, and then there's no more issue about that. And for this issue, according to Brian being a nuisance, Brian wouldn't give him a second. So I, I think it's pretty clear that there's some real monetary concerns. And I was present when our president said he, he doesn't get paid. But I too have a accounting sheet and looks like check number twenty-eighty-seven for seven hundred dollars, our president. And I also noticed in here, in the newspaper, it says, "Schuster said he had not witnessed Matamore using intimidating tactics." I'll repeat, he did not witness Matamore, that's our president, using intimidating tactics. Two meetings ago, that was in March, we had a Laramie police officer stand up, yell across the, the room, and I quote, "You are about ready to commit a crime." He said that in Brian's presence. And he directed that to the president. The people in the audience were appalled. Nobody in the audience has ever even seen something like this, where an elderly gentleman was being threatened. And it was, it was very clear that that was it. This wasn't an interpretation. But we have a liaison that wants to make sure that its status quo, fifty percent of that board approximately, is made up of WOTC. And there's some real problems, I think, as a result of that. I have seen a former president get up in front of the board and address how members should not be going to the newspaper and essentially expressing their First Amendment rights. And currently, it's my understanding, and I believe this went with Brian's endorsement, that currently the range is looking into hiring a lawyer, I believe this will probably be paid for with public funds, to go after certain members who aren't toeing the line. And I think the appropriate thing would be for this council to elect immediately a different liaison, as it's very clear that Mr. Schuster has got a conflict. And I might add too, I've been sitting in the back, and intermittently, when the furnace comes on, I'm smelling Mercaptan again. And I, I think this issue hasn't been addressed. I, I think rather than just a intermittent measurement, that there should be a CO monitor and monitor the Mercaptan and tape it to the ceiling and do a, a graph over a period of three or four days or something so you can get a handle on it. Maybe there's some wind currents that are affecting the flu, but the exposure to those chemicals are cumulative, and they're not good. And I have a headache. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Hale. No, you're fine. No, you're fine. No, you're fine. Any other public comment this evening? Okay. Move on to item number fifteen, which is consideration of future council work session topics. Does anybody have any thoughts? I do have a question for the city manager regarding work sessions on the Monolith Ranch. I know that we do have it as a city council goal, and it sounds like there was some, definitely some significant discussion about the direction of the ranch and some thoughts of the ranch. Do we have any upcoming work sessions with the ranch scheduled already?
Mayor, you do not.
Okay. It might be my recommendation to council to add a, a work session, joint work session with the Monolith Ranch Committee to discuss the long-term plan, have that conversation with them, as well as the workload for the Monolith Ranch Committee. Do I have any, anybody willing to support that?
Yeah, I was going to say that we might need to do that because we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do a long-term plan with five people.
I think that would be appropriate to add to the...
That are always there, all, all the time.
I think it would be appropriate to add to the list to try to set that up sooner than later.
Can I just clarify? Did you say a joint work session with the Monolith Ranch Committee?
Yes.
And the topic is...
Long-term range plan that we have asked them to, or set in council goals to initiate, that they've had some conversations on, as well as the makeup of the Monolith Ranch Committee and their workload. Any other thoughts on work session topics tonight? Councilor Hanson?
I just brought this up before. For some reason, I had an item on there, the joint entities that we have between county and city to investigate them. They are no longer on that list. It may have just been an omission, or something may have happened, or somebody thought we took, took and taken care of it by dealing with the ambulance issue. But I still would like to have a discussion of that sometime, and it's been on there for some time, and we pick it up once in a while. Thank you.
City Manager, I know we've discussed a catalog or a database kind of that you guys are working on about joint city agreements, do you want to...
Yeah, council, I think I may have copied you a few weeks ago, actually, maybe more like a month or month and a half ago now on an email. But the mayor and I discussed, the reason that that has been delayed, and I want to explain this and certainly own it as well, but the reason that the work session has been delayed is that the vision for that was to create a database like we have with other major partners, the university. And that database would outline all of the cooperative agreements that we have with that entity. And it's, it's a transparency issue for the public, for the council, so you understand what all those agreements look like. Unfortunately, with the transitions that we've had in the city attorney's office, we have not made, my office has not made good progress in creating that database. So Bob and I talked about this, I don't know, a couple of months ago, and we agreed that we would try to work with the county attorney's office to put this database together. But I've been hesitant to bring you a data... I've been hesitant to bring you a database that is not very good, frankly, because my level of confidence with it isn't high. So now, having the database material to establish really the content of the work session is why we delayed it. So in the email I sent you about a month and a half ago, I said, "We're going to take some time, work on establishing the database, which is the content of the work session, and that at some future date, we'll provide the database to you, and then have a subsequent work session if you'd like us to."
Your Honor, it is just that the item has disappeared from the list.
Right.
And that's what my concern was. What I hear is very encouraging to me, that's what I'm interested in, and if you want it on or off the list, probably on is better, because then it's on the radar screen somehow. And so I would suggest that we put it back on the list as an item that will come up sometime for a work session.
Fair enough. I have no concern with putting it back on the list.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other thoughts this evening on work sessions? Okay. All right, with that, Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that council adjourn to executive session regarding personnel, paragraph... This is city ordinance, right?
State statute.
State statute, I'm sorry. State statute 16-4-05, exception X, number 10, Roman numeral 10.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Polikas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned to personnel, or we are adjourned to executive session for personnel.